Call to order, City Commission Meeting of Tuesday, June 19th, 2018. Let the record show that all Commissioners are present. First item is the Order of Business. Are there any changes to the Order of Business?
Thank you, President Decker. For under Item 3C, we'd like to add a couple more reports. One is a support letter that you were given, and then another one would be considering a joint meeting of a quorum with the Stark Development Board and City Commissioners. Also, under 5, Engineering, 5A, that will change from an action item to a report.
Okay.
And then also, under 6, V and C, they will be presented by the Solid Waste Manager Pros.
Okay. Any questions for Mrs. Carlson on the Order of Business? Not I look for a motion.
Make motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve the Order of Business with a second. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, all in favor of the Order of Business as amended?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Order of Business is approved. Second item, the Consent Agenda. Is there anything on the Consent Agenda that Commissioners would wish to discuss? Not I look for a motion.
Move to approve the Consent Agenda.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
With a second. Any further questions, discussion, comments on the Consent Agenda? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mrs. Trustam?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Consent Agenda is approved. We have some timetable items that will be at 4:55, starting at 4:55, but we will move into the non-timetable. And the first item up will be the Administration and Finance, and City Attorney Murtha, you have a introduction.
Thank you, President Decker, members of the Commission. I wanted to introduce you to Jordan Gross. Jordan, if you'd like to join me up at the podium. Jordan has just completed his first year of law school at UND Law School. He is externing with us this summer. He will be here for the duration of the summer, returning for his second year in the fall. During the externship program, Jordan actually is here for 40 hours a week, but he is not paid by the city. Actually, he pays and earns credit through his experience here. He participates in classroom time and has homework assignments, as well as the assignments that we provide him. So I just wanted to introduce you to him. He'll be located at City Hall, and he'll be assisting us with ordinance reviews and revisions, primarily this summer. And we just appreciate having him here and wanted to give you the opportunity to meet him.
Welcome.
Welcome. Hello, everyone. Hello.
Yes, well, hopefully you are enjoying your time spent. I've seen you here for the past couple of weeks, so probably it's been longer, but hopefully you're enjoying your time. I'm glad there's somebody in there reviewing all our ordinances. So, anything else? I found out when I first met you, your family's local, right?
Yes, I grew up in Hazen.
Okay, you grew up in Hazen. And I think you said your parents were originally from Richertown area, or?
My father's from Richertown, yes.
Okay. All right. Well, welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next item up, we have a job description. HR Coordinator Nomenek for Animal Control Officer.
Good evening, Mr. President, Commissioners. The Animal Control Officer Job Description before you. We are looking to reclassify this. It will be moving up one grade level. This position is responsible for coordinating and performing a variety of animal control and compliance functions, including controlling assigned areas, monitoring and enforcing animal control regulations, responding to animal control inquiries and complaints from the public, issuing citations, warnings, and performing all public animal-related, public safety and health duties, animal care, maintaining and cleaning the animal shelter. This position, we all feel that they have a great deal of, they are required to work a great deal on their own. We have one other person that works in the animal control, in the animal shelter, and that is the supervisor. So there's a great deal of independent work. They work with animals that are rabid sometimes, having to trap animals. So in reviewing the job description and rescoring, we came up with 425 points, which puts it in a Class II, Grade II, and we are asking for your approval to upgrade this position.
Thank you, Mrs. Nomenek. Any questions for Mrs. Nomenek on the Animal Control Officer Upgrade?
Does he have any after-hours responsibility? If he gets a call at 10 o'clock at night, is he required to go there?
Sometimes, not necessarily at 10 o'clock. If it were something like that and they weren't on duty, most likely a police officer would be dispatched to a situation like that. But weekends, yes. Holidays, yes. They do come in and work taking care of the animals and that sort of thing.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mrs. Nomenek? Thank you. If not, I look for a motion on the approval of the job description.
Move to approve. Second.
We have a motion to approve with a second. Any further discussion? Questions for Mrs. Nomenek? Not we'll vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mrs. Trustam?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Animal Control Officer Job Description approved.
Thank you.
And I guess you're up for the, up to bat again. You've got a Hiring Journal coming up.
Yes. So with the Hiring Journal, the first position is Police Officer. We currently have an opening. We just did interviews on that and are in the interview process, and offer has been made. So they, actually, they're in the background phase of that. We had a Patrol Sergeant opening recently, and the position just closed this week. That's an internal opening. We have an Information Intelligence Analyst position that is, we are going to be doing interviews for that Thursday. So we have one opening there. That is a new position. And then the Animal Control Officer, we've had open a few times. We are waiting to get this reposted now that the job description's been updated. Firefighter, we currently had an opening for firefighter that has been filled, and with one of our volunteer firefighters did take that position. City Forester, we've had that position open for a little while here, and our forester just started this week. So we do have that position filled. Computer Technician, we have filled that position too recently, so that person is onboard and working. The Street and Fleet Manager position is still kind of on hold. Street Maintenance Operator, we did fill a current opening for Street Maintenance Operator. Water Utility Operator, we had interviews today for that position. And then we had a couple, two limited-hour Library Assistant positions. One of them was filled, and the other one will be doing interviews on Friday for that position. We have a couple internal positions. As I mentioned, the Patrol Sergeant, Chief Engineering Technician, that's not on here yet, that we recently opened internally. And Scale Attendant position that we just opened at the landfill, at the Baylor Building.
All right, thank you. Any questions for Mrs. Nomenek? Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next item up is the Annual Library Report, and that will be presented by Library Director Anan.
Thank you, Mr. President, Commissioners. I've just come today to share with you some highlights from the annual report that we filed with the North Dakota State Library this year, and a little bit about what's going on at the library. You will have seen a full copy of the annual report in your packets. We do have copies of it at the library as well, so if anyone wants to see even more statistics, they can come in and do that. If I can make this. So, a few things about us in 2017, as was reported. We were open more than 5,000 hours in total across our sites. Not everyone realizes, but in addition to the main library, we do have hours at the satellite site in Madora where the school is, open a little bit over 1,000 hours a year there, 8 to 4:30 right now throughout the summer. We also have hours on the Bookmobile. Our Bookmobile travels by far the most of any of those in North Dakota. She made 492 stops next year, or last year. That's everywhere from the schools to places like Hawks Point to actual ranch stops out in Slope County. So she puts on a lot of miles, a lot of hours out there, and more than 3,000 hours open at the main library. We had 11,642 people that were registered to be able to check out books, et cetera. That's not everybody that comes in, that's just ones that actually get a library card. That said, we had more than 88,000 actual visitors to the building last year. Total circulation of 105,292 items. Almost as much adult materials as children's, which is often not what you think of. We obviously see a lot of kids, but lots of adults coming in and out, too. Electronic materials loaned, that's eBooks, e-audio, and other things that are checked out and downloaded through the library's website. A little bit more than 18,000, that number grows all the time, as does that number of items. Database uses, we loaned more than 2,000 items out to other libraries around the state and around the country, actually, and borrowed 391 in return. And that last one is for the AWE bilingual station that we have for kids downstairs. 1,798 sessions, averaging about 28 minutes each of kids that are doing learning games at those computers downstairs. I did not include it on here, but we also have free Wi-Fi in computers. Wi-Fi, I wish I had the number on the top of my head, but it's huge. Just busy. Our collections, and this is just what we house in the building, or make available, because obviously electronic isn't in the building. But in total, 148,000 items that are part of our circulating collections at this time. 95,487 of those, that was as of December 31st, are your traditional books. But we also have serial subscriptions, which includes newspapers, magazines, et cetera. More than 26,000 eBooks that you can download. Audios and CDs, 2,000-plus, 2,589 physical items in our building, but also more than 14,000 that you can download, which we see people doing more and more of all the time. Our video collection, again, as of December 31st, had 7,738 items in it, and we have 1,000 of those downloadable as well. Then other items, 117, that's things that don't fit in the other categories, and I did list some of those because they're things I like to remind people we have they don't always remember. But we do have North Dakota State Park passes, so you can check one out for a week. It will let you into any North Dakota State Park. It does not let you into the Teddy Roosevelt Park, which is federal, but any state park that is your entry pass. So use it if you like. We have book club kits with 10 copies of a book, plus discussion questions and things like that to facilitate book clubs. We also have leapfrog devices and me readers that are for preschool-aged kids, so they have something that they can listen to as well as read along with. Our library programming continues to grow and grow. We had 303 programs last year, more than 29,000 people that attended those. Once again, people tend to think it's all kids, and 19,198 of them were, but we also saw more than 7,000 teens and 2,834 adults that showed us to attend library programs last year. We give tours. We take place at things like the Health and Safety Fair, et cetera. We had 560 people that came to our Summer Reading Kickoff, and 400 people that came out to view the eclipse with us last year, so that was fun, too. Every year, we do have a partnership with AARP. They come in and they do tax help. In 2017, they helped 362 people file their taxes. That's free help available at the library. I believe that number was over 380 this spring. Paint in Pajamas was a new program. We did this last year, and that's where we had a painting kind of activity, if you want, for adults, and at the same time, we did a Storytime, a pajama Storytime downstairs for the kids. We found out that was very popular, gave people a chance to come out and do something creative and fun, socialize a little bit, and not worry about their kids getting in trouble while they were about it. I did just put on here, I want to do a little shout-out to some of our programming partners because we don't do all of this all by ourselves. We have worked with the Dickinson Downtown Association. We worked with the Heart River Writers Circle through Dickinson State University, bringing in authors and those sorts of things, and also the Dunn County Writers. So a huge thanks to all of them for helping us do the things we do. This is just a picture from our Summer Reading Program kickoff last year. I told you there were 560 people that attended, and this next slide then gives you the outcome, if you will, of our Summer Reading Program from last summer. So we had 1,135 separate individuals that participated in some fashion in our Summer Program last year. And then we have the actual reading logs that were turned in. Those items that you see in the bold print are all areas where our numbers had gone up from the year before. So some of those are particularly exciting. We see 114 teens coming in, averaging 17 hours of reading in the summer. We get excited about that. That's kids involved in something that's going to help them stay on track so they're ready to succeed in school again in the fall. 326 of the school-aged kids, five to 10-year-olds, most of them, on an average, read almost 900 minutes per child, so that's exciting. The zero-to-fours, when we say 9,000 activities turned in, each one of those activities is a little sheet that's actually 10 activities. So it's somebody read a story to them, and they did a learning rhyme, and they did a total of 10 different activities, and there were 9,660 sets of those that were turned in. Once again, we find that really exciting because that's not just kids, that's parents that are committed to their children's learning and being ready to start school. And then we did have 129 adults that turned in coupons for the adult program last year as well. Looking forward to some of what we've got going on here. I always do like to remind people, if you want to know what's happening at the library, do like us on Facebook. First thing on Sunday every week, our schedule of activities for the week goes out there. It's also published in the newspaper, and we have a calendar at the library, so lots of places to find out what's going on. And some of the traditional library things, I always like to take the opportunity to remind people. So Tiny Tots Storytime, that's Mondays at 9:30, that's the zero-to-twos. So they come in and they do some nursery rhymes and music and things that are geared towards their age group. We have two different preschool Storytimes. This is for the three- to five-year-olds. That's Tuesdays at 10:30, and Wednesdays at 10:30 as well. That's a change from previous years. And lots of other programs. So we have STEAM, that's the Science, Technology, Art, and Math, and Engineering. I would always forget the E for some reason for programs, but we do those about once a week year-round. Lego Club, twice a month, Teen Tuesdays, Tuesdays after school or a little bit earlier during the summer. We always have something that's planned, especially for teens. Family Movies this summer, those are at 3 o'clock in the afternoon on Fridays, and there's a movie. Come, bring your kids, bring a drink, we'll give you a bag of popcorn, doesn't cost you anything. I think Pitch Perfect III is what we're showing this Friday. We also have Adult Book and Craft Clubs, Paint in Pajamas we talked about earlier, lots and lots more. Couple of things that we have that are new this summer that we're pretty excited about and I wanted to share with you. Particularly, we're doing some programming on Mondays. That's for kids. We have a free meal for any kids under the age of 18. It's being sponsored by Pizza Ranch. We have had three weeks so far, so 55, 70, and 48 kids respectively on the different weeks so far. So we're seeing a lot of them. That is followed up then with our STEAM activity for kids aged 6 to 10, and we're seeing around 48 to 50 kids at that activity the last couple of weeks, too. So, pretty exciting. And also, we have started something new. We do show family films, and we show kids films and other things, but we've got something that we're calling Film Society, and this is for showing the independent films, the kinds of things that never make it to Dickinson. And so you can look on our schedule for Saturday of every month and see what we're going to show, come out and see something different, and have a good time maybe talking about it afterwards. AWE, I always put this slide in because, as far as I know, we're the only place in town that has something like it. It is a computer, which kids find endlessly fascinating, of course, and it has hundreds, literally, of learning games from pre-reading to music to drawing, all kinds of things on there. And it does have a complete Spanish, as well as English, interface there for them to use. So last slide for you, just to remind you, library's there, Monday through Thursday, 9 to 8, Friday from 9 to 6, Saturday from 9 to 5, and we'd love to see you. Thanks.
Thank you. Any questions for Library Director Anan?
Do you have any update on your expansion, or?
Update is that we're getting excited about planning.
Good.
So we've been working with Bartlet and West, our architect, and I wish I could tell you dates, but we haven't firm them up yet, but there will be a couple of public forums coming this summer. We will be doing a staff workshop, et cetera. We do hope in about four months' time to have those preliminary set of drawings for people to look at and start to get excited and talk about. The other thing that I would love to mention is that the foundation did get a matching grant from Stark Development for some seating and planters out on the north side of the library. That's where we'd taken all the plantings out because of the water problems we were having in the building, and it got all put in cement. So the planters are there already. They arrived the end of last week and stopped by and see them, and we are looking forward to a couple of benches and almost like a picnic table sort of thing that is handicap-accessible, so it will have seating on three sides and the other side open, so you can pull up a wheelchair to it if you would like.
Awesome. Wonderful.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we have an update on our City Administrator Search by City Attorney Murtha.
Thank you. President Decker, members of the Commission, I want to let you know that St. Peter will be sort of working, I believe that he will be speaking.
Good job.
There you go. I'll just show. He'll be here Thursday, and he'll be meeting with, thank you, he'll be meeting with Commissioners individually to discuss the job description and just your insights about the position. So that, I believe after that time, we'll be able to provide you with an update as to goal times and the progress for the search. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Attorney Murtha? All right, we have about a minute. Mrs. Carlson, can you give us a quick on the special meeting?
Okay. Thank you, President Decker, Commissioners. Just wanted to let you know that with Dickinson holding the city elections in conjunction with the state primary election on June 12th, we now will proceed with our official, bringing in the official elected Commissioners. And with that, we need to have, every person elected shall take the oath of office within 10 days after notice of election has been given. With that, and then also with that meeting is an organizational meeting, and with that, at the organizational meeting, the Commission shall elect a Vice President who shall perform the duties of the President in their absence, and then the nominating of Commissioners to other boards. So we have committees that the Commissioners will attend those committees. So all of that is being prepared, and I am asking, I would like to recommend to the Commission body to hold the organizational meeting and oath of office on June 25th, which is a Monday, at 8:00 a.m., because as of June 26th, the newly-elected City Commission and Council members take office. So I'd like to do it before they take office, so they can do the oath. So I'm looking for yes, no, if your calendars are available. It would be that Monday, June 25th, at 8:00 a.m. here at City Hall. It should be pretty short. It'll be just a special session.
All right. I'm good with that.
I won't be available.
Okay.
But you won't need me at that meeting.
Okay.
Okay. All right, I guess we're set for the 25th, then?
Yep.
Okay. Next item up on our timetable, 4:55, is a presentation and introduction by Mr. Bars from Southwest Water.
President Decker, members of the Commission, and all in attendance, my name is Larry Bars, Chairperson of the Southwest Water Authority Board of Directors, and I'd like to thank you for the invitation to introduce one of our newest members that was appointed, Jason Vance. I'd like to have him take the podium here.
President Decker, members of the Commission, I would just like to say thank you for the appointment, and I'm going to work hard for the city of Dickinson and all of the members of Southwest Water. Lot to learn. We've had, I've gotten three meetings under my belt, and it's like feeding from a hot fire hose, but I'm going to do my best to do a great job on this board, so thank you.
Thank you for stepping up.
Any questions for Jason?
Anyone? Any questions?
He's going to be a very good member of the Southwest Board of Directors. For those of you who might be unfamiliar with our project, I'll provide just a little bit of background. In 1981, our forefathers in the Legislature established a state-owned project, and they called it the Southwest Pipeline Project. And this was supposed to be, and was administered by the State Water Commission. They saw this as an investment in Southwest, and with the return on that investment for the entire life of the project. Management and operations and maintenance of the Southwest Pipeline Project were transferred to the Southwest Water Authority in 1996. The Southwest Pipeline Project began providing water to Dickinson in 1991, in October. In the beginning, there were 27 members on the Board of Southwest Water Authority. And in 2001, Southwest Authority was downsized to 14 members, and then in 2009, we added the city of Mandan. So we have a Board of 15 members that we work with. A few of the projects that are going on right now, and most of you are familiar with the new 6-million-gallon treatment plant in Dickinson, is complete and producing water. And the residuals handling system building is immediately behind this, the new treatment plant, and this should eliminate the use of the sledge ponds down there. We should have those out of the way after this residual handling plant gets going. We have a couple raw water reservoirs, one in East Dickinson, a big one, again, in East Dickinson, you've probably seen that, and there's another one north of Richertown. And then, of course, the one that we are struggling with is our intake. And I know that you heard a lot about that, and if there's any questions, we could talk about it if you wish. And then, of course, the parallel piping from the intake to the treatment plants is in progress also. Funding is always a big thing. The Rural Sources Trust Fund was set up to fund the pipeline. However, money coming in, as it has with the oil... However, money coming in, as it has with the oil, our whole state is just kind of needing that money. And so, it's a struggle to get what we need. The total cost or the total amount of money that has been invested in the pipeline is around $373 million. 227 of that came from the Resources Trust Fund. 24 of it came from the, from bonds, which are paid, and federal funds of $122 million. To as of today, those benefiting from the Southwest Pipeline, the Southwest Authority's customers are paying back more than $5 million a year back to the Resources Trust Fund. They have already paid back to that investment $59 million. So, it is really doing its job. And this was set up on a basis of payment on how many gallons of water was consumed. We're not done by any means. We have to get back around to those. We've made the complete circle to start, that we started with. But now, we've got about 500 people on the waiting list that need water. So, we've got to start with parallel piping, more storage, bigger pumps, and get back. So, actually, we're just starting again. That's a real quick overview. And I did forget to introduce our executive assistant, and sorry about that, Jen Murray. And if any questions that you have from the, for the manager, CEO, Jen can probably handle them. Any questions, Jen?
Any question, Commissioner?
Thank you, Mr. Bars, for all you do.
Thank you.
I know you're heavily involved. We spend a lot of time with it, so thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much. Our next timetable agenda is a presentation on Dickinson State University. And that will be done by Mr., or Dr. Metzl, President Metzl.
Thank you. First, I want to say how happy I am that you've invited me to speak. When I first became president, just under three years ago, I was invited to speak to the Commission and tell them all of my goals. And I thought it was probably a good time to see if I've reached any of them for you. And so, I wanted to come back and let you know what has happened and where we are going and a potential new curricular pathway, not a new mission, but a new way to address workforce needs and workplace needs through the institution. So, we start here. DSU Forward is our strategic plan. Develop, strengthen, and unify. If you take the first letter of each of those words, it is DSU. That's a little hokey, but we like it. What we look at, as we look at the DSU Forward, is that is an arrow moving in hopefully the forward direction. And the head of the arrow is made up of many different people from the community, both on campus and the larger community. And the reason we do that is, you can shoot an arrow, but the head determines the direction in which it is flying. And if we don't have the right people helping us and we aren't doing the right communication with the head of that arrow, then nothing that we are going to try works. So, we are extremely happy and humbled to be a part of the Dickinson community. And we always want to involve the Dickinson community and surrounding area as much as we are able. So, that is where we began with the DSU Forward. And if we talk about parts of it, we'll begin with develop. One of the things we'd wanted to do was to strengthen our academics. DSU is in its centennial year. It's had 100 years of wonderful education, but we need to keep that going into the second century. And as stated by my Vice President for Academic Affairs, Carmen Wilson, the goal in academic and student affairs has been to work together utilizing the strengths and competencies of faculty and staff to develop curriculum and programs that serve the needs of our students and build community. So, three years ago, or a little under three years ago, we wanted to put together areas to help develop our programming. Where we are so far is to begin, one, giving students a place on campus they can call home. If you've been through the Student Center over the past several years, it's somewhat empty. And when I arrived on campus, the students said they wanted it to be fixed up in a way where they would feel more comfortable utilizing that. So, part of this was to turn the perch, which is a cafeteria. We started a Blue Hawk Hub. The Blue Hawk Hub, when I arrived, was the non-collegiate competitive athletic workout room, consisted of two treadmills and a broken bicycle, I believe. And with the West River Community Center, what we have done is any student who's staying on campus, we give them a free pass to the West River Community Center. We have one of the best centers in the state. Why not take advantage of that? Why try to compete with that? So, we took the Blue Hawk Hub and originally turned it into a conference room, which upset the students mightily since that's their building. And what they wanted was a pub. So, it's a dry pub because they're students. But we turned it into an area with TVs and some gaming areas, but really just sort of a comfortable place where they can go 24 hours a day and meet each other, do studies, whatnot. And they've really sort of come into that mode. The guide app is through an outside vendor that works with student, works with smartphones. Students don't use email much anymore. That's almost as passe as sending hard mail. They want to use their phones. They want to use their texts. They want to get updates. And this guide app has helped us do that a great deal. Part of that guide app is an advising module. But we're also looking at programming, not just reaching out to students, but doing different programming. We started an MA in Teaching and we started an online RN to BSN program. Both of those are up and running now. We've submitted for an MA in Entrepreneurship. And this particular degree does not require an undergraduate in entrepreneurship. What we're trying to capture are students who've already gotten a degree, want to come back, start their own business, have an idea. They aren't quite sure how to work within that field. So, the Entrepreneurship Masters takes about 18 months, but you can have any background and come in and get that notice. And we want people to be able to hit the ground running very quickly when they do that. Then, on the other side of that, and I'll speak to this a little later, but the new certificate and degree programs, the statement is that 97% of all jobs will require some type of post-high school education in the next five years. Not all of that will be four-year degrees. Not all of that will be two-year degrees. Some of it will be certificate and degree program. But we are trying very hard to start up certificate programming in the area where our industry, our local industry in western North Dakota, needs that help. We've put together five new ones. We're waiting on a sixth. They're all coming out this fall. We'll continue to expand in that area. And then, expanding community programming, we've tried to do quite a bit in that area. So, we were, and we'll continue to work on that, on those issues. But the second part of develop is infrastructure. I, when I arrived, I told people what we had was a wonderful 1953 museum. The problem was, we were using it as our campus. So, we've been trying to update many of those. If you go to campus now, you will find Woods Hall is not really enterable. We had to replace the entirety of the HVAC system. It was a little over 35 years old. We're getting that done now. We are updating our university store and we've outsourced some of the costs for that. And what we want to do is make that much more student-friendly in terms of book ordering, clothing, things of that area. Noting that our Dickinson population has an average age of 31. We want to be family-friendly. We have two lactation or infant care rooms on campus, one in May Hall and one in the Student Center. We're updating our mailroom. We're up to, and one of the things we did with this was to use UNESCO for an energy savings. We didn't have the money to do all of the work that I'm talking about. And we, I would never put that debt onto the institution. But working with UNESCO, you go through these energy-saving grants and they've been extremely wonderful in helping us. We were able to get close to $9 million worth of projects started. And we're not, we didn't have to take out any debt on the institution to do so. So, that's been, that's been a lot of fun. My VP for Finance, Marty Parsons, has been in charge of this entire slide. He's done wonderful work. We also want to develop our resources. We've begun tracking every month where we are with our resources and with our costs. After the last biennium, we were slated for a time to be cut almost 30% in our allocated funding. And that's enough to wake you up and realize that you need to have a plan that goes beyond the next biennium. So, we put together a four-year plan, much of which was trying to determine where are our resources. And you can see here, the top blue line gets lost a little bit in the beginning of the July, August, but you can see it beginning to separate in March and April. We're about 5.5% ahead in our resources right now. And that was in April. We are now about 5.9% ahead in May. Those numbers just came out. So, we're trying to be as frugal as possible with our resources coming through while still ensuring that we give the best possible education to our students. In strengthening, we want to look at professional development. And one of the things I tell people is, whatever degree you've obtained, at whatever level, it's good for about four years, just like a textbook. If you pick up a textbook after four years, you find that it's fairly outdated. Your education is no different. If you do not continue learning beyond that four years, if you do not continue adding to it, then you become outdated as a textbook. We have faculty and staff, the one thing I love about higher education is it's one of the few industrial areas where you can get a job and stay for decades. We have faculty who've been with us 25 or 30 years and same with staff. Problem is, after four years, if they don't continue learning, then they become a textbook. We don't want that. So, we have to make sure that they have the funds available to get professional training to ensure that they're always in the top of their field regardless of whether they're faculty or if they're staff. And we've been working extremely hard to put money away for just those issues. I've just pulled out three potentials. On the left-hand side, our nursing students won an award for some of the work that they had done, some of the research they had done with faculty mentoring on campus. The middle picture is, we were in Bismarck doing a leadership tabletop exercise, found out that we're in pretty good shape compared to many of the other institutions. We're running pretty safe ship. And on the right-hand side was one of our younger members to enter the education field. We're extremely proud of what they have accomplished. But we want to continue investing in our staff, investing in our faculty while they're here. One is to keep them here, retention. If we don't offer professional development, they leave. Second part of strengthening is recruitment. And here, I have to give my kudos to the Heritage Foundation. Ty Orton began on the same day as did I. So, he's been here a little bit under three years. They started with no debt in the foundation, but they started with no assets. There were perfect zero. Over the last couple of years, they've been able to hand out over $700,000 for academic and athletic scholarships. That's pass-through money. That's money that they've had to raise every year. Next year, they're hoping to be able to give about $925,000. To be able to do that in this little bit of time that they've been in existence is phenomenal. It cannot be done without Dickinson and without the surrounding area. And here, I need to put in a shout for all of the surrounding areas, all of the people who have rallied around Dickinson State University and helped us achieve these goals. We're also implementing a summer bridge program. And this is for students who, for many different reasons, may have a little bit of trouble as they enter college. Maybe a high school where they didn't have all of the different programs. They may be one of the brightest people of which you know, but they haven't been exposed to all the different areas of higher education. We are going to bring them in during the summer. We will be able to offer them a small scholarship to do that. And what we will do during that period of time is to get them used to the campus, give them some academics, introduce them to the faculty, so that when the fall comes around, it's not as big and scary as it is for many of your first-year cohort who get dropped off by mom and dad. So, we're hoping that will help raise our retention a great deal. And we continue our partnership with EAB and Royal. They are an external company who helps us with our social media. We're a small institution. We don't have a lot of people to help with social media on the inside and we cannot overburden them too much. These two companies have been just wonderful. Last year, the average first-year to second-year retention in North Dakota is about 53%. We're a little smaller. We were at 55%. We were not happy with 65%, or 55% needs to be much higher. We were able in one year to raise that 10 percentage points. We were at 65% coming into this year. Our goal is to be at 75% next year. That is a bit aggressive, but my team has been extremely good. They always say surround yourself with people smarter than yourself. I've not had any trouble doing that. So, I have a lot of faith in what it is they're able to do. Under unify, we want to look at our communication. And one of the things that we've been pushing is the fact that you cannot have a strong institution if you do not have a partnership with the surrounding city and surrounding area. So, when we talk about communication, it is not just on campus, but off-campus as well. It's extremely important to us. And much of what we have done, we're sort of focusing on the centennial celebrations this year because we're very proud to have made it to 100 years. But we're working with the city. We're working with the Chamber, the Downtown Dickinson Association, the Convention and Visitors Bureau, Rough Rider Commission. All of these different areas are working together for the centennial. And what I've been telling people is that this is not DSU Centennial. This is Dickinson Centennial. And we're celebrating everything that has happened between the region and with the city. So, that's part of how we're looking at our communication is whenever we make a decision, it's for the entirety of the area, not just the university itself. We have different activities on display on the slide. I will not read through all of those, but if you're not doing anything between the 28th and 30th, you're invited to all the different events in the calendar. It's at DickinsonState.edu/centennial. So, would love for you all to help us celebrate this just wonderful achievement and we'll make sure that we're still here in another 100 years. But also, part of unifying is connections and partnerships with communities and constituents. And this goes into athletics. People always ask me, where's the, what is the role of athletics in an academic institution? And the role of athletics is very large. Often, when a student comes in, especially a first-year student, maybe a first-generation student, that athletic team is that person's first family. That athletic team becomes their home. That athletic team is what keeps them through that first and second semester. What they always say is, in the first two years, students will listen to their coach above anybody else. In the last two years, they begin to listen more to their faculty as they begin that transition. But our athletes have a very high retention and they do extremely well in the classroom. I argue that the NAI is one of the last athletic conferences where you have the true scholar-athlete, where people are expected to still go to class. Our athletes last year had the same GPA as the university as a whole. We're extremely proud of that. Pete Stanton, our athletic director, has been the main reason behind that area. So, you can look at the different areas that have been instituted under Pete's leadership to make sure that our student athletes are doing as well as possible. And the picture on the right, I took that after our men and women won the 2017 Cross-Country Conference Championships and went to Nationals. It was 17 degrees. I think the kids took the cold much better than did I, but they performed very well. We also want to look at us reaching out into the city, into the area. So, I've put together just sort of a shortlist of where I ask for our campus to participate within the city and within the area. So, we're on the Downtown Dickinson Task Force, the Manufacturers Roundtable, NDUS Technology Committees, the Envision 2030 Work Groups, which are statewide, the BAC and U Collaboration, which is a Western academic collaboration, the Stark Development Corporation, Rotary, Boy Scouts, and we could go on. I'm very proud that our campus wants to be involved with the city as much as the city wants to be involved with our campus. We need to be as good a steward for the city as we try to be for our students. And so, this, that is why I put up this slide. Then, we also, under the foundation, we need to begin our capital campaign. DSU has never really had a capital campaign in the history of its foundations. And we are going to begin one. We don't really have it in the public phase yet. You tend to do the private phase first and then kind of roll that out. But we'll be coming and rolling out the ideas to everybody. And we would hope for all of your feedback and guidance as we go forward. The old foundation dissolution has gone to its final. All the money has been transferred. They're clearing up a little bit of paperwork, but the new foundation is solidly on its own at this stage and everything else has been, has been taken care of. I want to mention a little bit the scholarships and endowments. One of the things we wanted to do with our students was to show loyalty to them. What we did was change how we hand out scholarships. If you are a student in high school, you have a certain GPA, certain ACT, you automatically qualify for a merit scholarship. That merit scholarship, as long as you maintain a certain level of academics here at DSU, will follow you for four years. You do not have to reapply for it. It automatically comes back to you. And that is something brand-new at DSU. They've all, we've always had one-year scholarships that had to be renewed, had to be reapplied. This will follow you and it increases a little bit every year. We assume that we're going to have inflation and we want to make sure that you have in your scholarship that little bit of inflation covered as we go forward. So, we're proud of that. We are also building our endowments as much as we are able. Right now, the Heritage Foundation has total assets of about $10.5 million. When I looked at the job at DSU in 2012, the assets of the foundation, the old foundation at that time, were right around $11 million. So, they've done incredible work in a very short period. And where we're extremely happy is the focus of that work has been student scholarships. We will begin to branch out a little bit into programming scholarships and programming money, but we wanted to make sure first to cover each and every one of the students who wants to come to DSU. We're not quite there yet. We're going to continue working. I think our goal is if we could get to where we're giving $1.2 million in scholarships every year, we're covering everybody who wishes to be covered. So, we still have some work to do, but they have done really incredible things. And we want to celebrate our accomplishments. I think too many places you get caught up in all the work that has to be accomplished and everything that you have. and everything that you have to do as a daily grind every day, and you forget to celebrate when things go well. So this slide, I will not drag you all the way through, just different areas where we were able to celebrate all the accomplishments that have occurred on campus and because of the support we get from the Dickinson community, we're very proud of those. I'm going to switch gears here and look at what is called Dickinson State University, North Dakota's Polytechnic University. This idea came about from an idea the chancellor of the NDUS system asked our campus to consider a polytechnic. Why did he ask for us to consider this? Let me start there. We are the only four-year institution within a 200-mile radius. We're the only institution within 100 miles. We have a large geographic area. We owe it to our students to be able to offer the education that they want, when they want it, and where they want it. That is actually part of the NDUS mission. What we are finding in studies that students in western North Dakota are not able to get everything they want, especially with the workforce needs that are coming through. And this change, which is not a full mission change, and I'll take you through it, will allow for us to be more flexible and more ready to help meet workforce needs, as well as retaining that four-year liberal arts mission that is so important to the institution. So a polytechnic, if you just look at the arrow going up, at the very top of that, obviously, is student education, and that can be workforce education, it can be degree education, it can be a lot of different things. On the left-hand side, you have certificates and pre-associate, pre-BS degrees, I've kind of lumped them into certificate. On the other side, you have graduate, because we can't just offer, the fastest-growing degree in the entirety of the United States is a graduate degree. North Dakota's in the unique position that it's ranked number-one in state for the ability of students to get a career job without a BS. Not just a job, but a career job. So we're in somewhat of a unique situation where North Dakota lies along with the rest of the nation, where we want to be able to educate our students at all levels. The main shaft of that arrow is liberal arts. That is our mission. That is what we've been doing for the majority of 100 years. We will not lose that. What we think, though, or what we not think, but what we know, is that by becoming a polytechnic, being able to offer certificate programming, apprenticeship programming, associate programming, as well as some graduate programming, we can reach out to all of our students. And we're not huge. We're not going to lose what is our focus, but we want to be able to help those industries, those areas that need them. So what does it mean to be a polytechnic? Well, it's a career-focused education, continuing education, applied learning, critical thinking, everything that we say we do regardless, and everything when you contact employers, what they say they want. It is not a name change, it's not really a major change in mission. We already offer much of this. We already offer certificate program. We offer two-year programming. We offer some graduate programming, but we want to be able to expand in all the different areas. And that is where we're working with this program. So it is career-focused, engaging and responsive, certificate two-year programs. We would be expanding on those, and we would be more than happy to partner with Bismarck State College if they wish to partner with us on this. We have a four-year program on the Bismarck campus. If they wanted to come and help with two-year programs, we could invite them onto campus to make sure that we're doing this. What we really want to do is make sure that we are giving our students the best education in helping our industry needs. But continuing education, that involves graduate programming, degrees, certificates, courses for people who have taken a step off and come back on. I was at a conference in Utah, and they talked about polytechnic and dual mission. And what they said was, you need to be able to allow for the students to off-ramp. Too many students start their education, and then they stop. The problem is, if you're working toward a bachelor's degree, and you need 120 credits to get a four-year degree, and you end up with 110, and you step off, the only certificate you have is your high school degree. And all of that experience you've picked up in over three years or four years does not really show up when you go out to get a job. So off-ramping means that you design programs so that students can step off at different areas if they need. Family issues come up, work-related issues come up, health issues come up. But you design certificates in two-years and four-year degrees that when the students step off at whatever point in their education, you can give them a certificate or some type of document that indicates what they have already achieved. And you design these programs so that it could be a self-enclosed. It's meaningful to them. If they go out to that with an employer, it means something. It doesn't just mean that they've gone to college for two years and left. They've actually earned some type of area. And our nursing department does this quite well already. They do a certificate, then two-year, they all have to be earned, and then you go on to the four-year. And it works quite well, and we can do that in other areas. We're not recreating the will. As I said, Utah's been doing this for quite a while. What they have seen is increased enrollment, increased retention, increased donors for people who are just grateful to have been able to obtain the learning that they did. But it's also applied learning, and we do this fairly well already, but we want to increase that. Real-world applications, getting out into the field, getting into the different industries, not just learning in the classroom. Students spend the entirety of their time, a tenure as an undergraduate student, 25% of that is classroom. The rest of the learning is outside the classroom. We want to make sure it's meaningful. Laboratory experiences, in and out of the classroom, the internship opportunities, and all of those areas, we need to ramp that up for each and every one of our students at every level, and we've been working on that for the past couple of years. And then critical thinking. It seems pretty obvious. Everybody wants critical thinking. If you're faced with a problem, one of the things I love best about undergraduate liberal arts institutions is their students are taught to work with Merit. You get an open-ended semester project. Nobody tells you how it should finish. You work on it, and you think you're never going to complete it, and then suddenly you have. When you get out in the workforce, being able to look at an open-ended question and not panic, but just start in on it and begin to work toward that end goal, that's critical thinking. Those are the types of skills that we need. And much of what I was explaining in the earlier slides will lead to this area, but we need to emphasize it better. And that's part of where we are going as well. So that's where I am. I think we've made some progress in the two-and-a-half or so years since I've been here, and I wanted to show you kind of what we have already completed and where we want to go. And I thank you once again for the opportunity to address you this evening. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for Dr. Metzl?
Dr. Metzl, the Polytechnic University is very interesting, and I'm glad to see us going down that road. Not all high school seniors are fit for four-year programs.
Correct.
And this is just another option for the one that wants to further his education a little bit, get that certificate. And I think you're right, we can't lose in this thing. I think we can only win.
That is our hope.
Be interesting.
No, we've had many talks, Dr. Metzl and I, about the advantage of Dickinson State offering these programs, especially to the workforce that we have, and the demand on the workforce, and the ability to, at night, be able to possibly attend Dickinson State and continue that education and move forward to meet the needs of our expanding workforce. And I'm just excited for Dickinson State. It's been really great working with you the last two years.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Same. Thank you all once again.
Thank you. All right, our next timetable agenda is 5:25. We're a little bit over it, but we have a tax increment financing presentation, and that will be... Mrs. Carlson, are you starting? Or Mrs. Murtha, are you starting? Or we just bring Mr. Radham right up?
Mr. President, members of the commission, I believe we're starting with Mr. Radham's presentation, and then staff has a recommendation to provide to you subsequent to the presentation.
Okay. Mr. Radham?
My name is Andrew Hatton Ward. I work with Mr. Radham and Five Diamond LLC. And Ron has asked me to initiate the presentation tonight. Thank you for your time. We really wanted, just to give you an update of why we're here, where we came from, and then discuss why we were talking about a tax increment financing. We came to Dickinson in 2011, along with a lot of other developers to work on different projects. Our initial project was a 300-acre industrial project on the north county line, right in Dunedin, and it's the Five Diamond Industrial Park up there. But while we were there, we started looking at all the other places that all the other developers were working, and everybody was going to Williston and Minot. And we looked at that really hard, because that was the thing that was booming right at the time. But we wanted to be in a real community, a community that we knew was going to grow, regardless of whether oil was going to be as strong as it could be or so-so over the year. So we chose to invest here, and in 2014, we got involved with the rodeo group, and we bought the property for $4 million in order to be able to create the new rodeo park that just recently opened. And so that was our initial investment into this area. The area that we're looking at is on the I-94 business loop. I'm sure you've all known about that. Well, over the last five years, oil went down. A lot of the oil companies backed away, but we still worked really hard. We've been trying to get retail people to come in and anchor our site. And so for the last four or five years, we've been doing exactly that. Many of the major tenants would not come unless other major tenants were going to be here as well. So it's taken us a while to get there, but two years ago, we hired Lisa Bridge to come and work exclusively on this project in order to bring everybody together. And I'd like her to just give you a brief discussion of who we've got lined up, and we'd like to make that announcement to you guys right now. And then we'll talk about what we need to get the project to the finish line. Thank you.
Good evening.
My name is Lisa Bridge, and I represent Five Diamond as real estate manager. I've worked for Ron for the last two years, and my primary responsibility is to take these LOIs that he has had on these national retail tenants from LOI to lease fruition, and that is what I've done. The tenants that we have are part of the first phase, I will call it, of the Dickinson Hills Shopping Center development. We've sent to you a series of PDFs, and one of those PDFs is a site plan, if we can bring As part of the agenda packet.
I think it's just going to take a moment for them to load it.
Okay. So as you know, the Dickinson Hills Shopping Center development is part of an overall 80-acre shopping center plan. First phase is 19.75 acres. This first phase that we are speaking of is 12 acres, and of that plan, 96,000 square feet of that plan is pre-leased. And those leases encompass a Hobby Lobby with 55,000 square feet, a TJ Maxx with 22,000 square feet, a Dollar Tree store with 10,000 square feet, and a shoe department encore with 9,000 square feet. As I indicated to you, these are national credit tenants, and these tenants nationwide have over 18,000 stores with a combined annual revenue of over $36 billion. An additional 48,000 square feet of inline retail is in pre-lease mode. Together with the 96,000 square feet of inline retail equates to approximately 185 jobs immediately, with a combined sales tax generated of approximately $1.4 million in the first year and $3 million in annual wages alone. The opportunity for the city of Dickinson with this development goes beyond the employment opportunities for its people and tax revenues for the local government. The services that the tenants provide are those that will entice new people to reside here where others in the past have not. Increasing residential development and spurring the local economy and allowing the residents to enjoy shopping in their own hometown without going online or driving in excess 100 miles to do their shopping. As I have stated, these are national credit tenants, and they answer to Wall Street. They have calendar these stores for the year 2019. If these stores do not open in 2019, the opportunity for this location will in fact go away. It is doubtful that we will be able to bring them back in the near future for this location. We have received interest from additional users. However, it is irresponsible of us to further our negotiations with these users until we know for a fact that we have viable project to present to them. So with that, I'll turn it back to Andrew to talk about the additional financial impact that this project will have on the city.
So let me just take a quick look at what you're looking at here. So this is the general site plan that we have. And about three months ago, we contacted the city because we realized we were in a situation where the public infrastructure for the project and the costs associated with that were preventing us from continuing with the project. But I'd really like to show, you have it in your packet, so when you get a chance to look at your packet.
We do.
I'm looking at the public and private development costs, and to date, we've spent about $9.7 million on the infrastructure. That is the public infrastructure for the entire area. We picked up some of the drainage issues from the roar development and some of the other developable areas west of our project that need to hook into the fairway, the road that goes into the hospital area. So we've invested a lot of money on that, and we also had an anchor tenant at one point that, at the last minute, chose to come into the old city mall, and that's cash-wise, that we were right at the edge of starting with them and kicking this project off, but then they chose to go into the mall there, which is perfectly fine for them, but it kind of shut us down, and then the oil prices dropped out. Bottom line now is, we've invested $9.7 million. In order to get the other major anchor tenants in, there's about another $9.2 million of infrastructure that needs to be built, and that's for the entire site. So we asked the city, we were talking with Sean about the possibility of a tax increment financing. Now, we're from Utah, and in Utah and a lot of the other surrounding Intermountain states, tax increment financing applied to not only property tax, but applied to sales tax, any type of revenue that the cities could get. Now, we didn't realize until we spoke with Sean and had a conference call, and I believe Ms. Murtha was on that call as well, we realized for the first time that the tax increment financing is only limited to property tax of the city.
That is correct.
And obviously, that's not going to be sufficient to get the funds needed to get all of the infrastructure done. So we were looking at ways, and Sean was going to look at other options that the city may have, and you've probably had discussions about that. Where we're at right now is, we would like the city to consider, we've done the financial spreadsheets and to see what would happen. If you were able to bond for the public infrastructure of approximately $9.25 million and bond for 15 years payout, in 15 years, you would not only pay off the $9.2 million plus interest, there would be an additional $19 million of interest in property tax, sales tax, other taxes generated for the city over that 15 years. We actually think that the way the development will transpire is, the whole thing could be paid off in about eight or nine years, and then from then on, the residual sales tax that we're projecting at this point are not sales tax, all of the taxes combined, income for the city, is about $2.2 million a year. Now, compared to your 2018 budget, $2.2 million is roughly about 15%, 14% of the overall city budget. So just this one project could significantly add funds to the city. So that's what we would like you to consider. We realized that the tax increment financing is one tool, but in the state of North Dakota, it's a smaller tool than what we were expecting it to be, and so we're trying to look at other alternatives. That's basically our... Oh, good. Okay, so you can see, can you, I guess I have control over this, huh? That's the summary of the income potential of what we're asking. And basically, for an investment of $9.2 million into public infrastructure that will benefit not just our project, but will benefit all the other projects around there, we will be able to... be able to sign these five anchor tenants, or four anchor tenants, and probably a fifth one coming up right now, which will kick off this whole project. We've been working on it very hard diligently. We never, never did leave North Dakota as far as actually working on the project, but we've not been able to get everybody together until just the last couple of months. And now we've got all the people lined up. So with that in mind, I don't know if you have any questions about what our needs are, what your needs are, but basically, it comes down to, for an investment in two bonds for public infrastructure, there's $9.2 million asked and there's roughly $30 million returned over 15 years. So you more than cover the debt service and there's a residual income to the city of approximately $19 million based upon the numbers that we've been able to generate, let alone having national anchor tenants and services that for a crossroads city, you may want to have in your community, as well as all of the other excitement that it will generate in the general area. So do you have any questions for what we're looking at? Or I know this is kind of a curveball to you right now because we've been talking about tax increment financing and you are, well, I saw the merit nod his head, knowing that it doesn't cut it for what we've been looking for. And I don't know what your discussions have turned out to be, but we think it's a good investment to the city. We're not able to proceed with these major anchor tenants unless we know that we're going to have some type of public infrastructure support in this project. Any questions for us?
Any questions, Commissioners?
Mr. President. Okay, so the five anchor stores, and I'd like you to name them. We've got Hobby Lobby.
Yes.
TJ Maxx.
Yes.
Bismarck.
I can't hear you. Come up to the microphone, please.
There's Hobby Lobby at 55,000 square feet, TJ Maxx at 22,000 square feet, Shoe Department Encore at 10,000 square feet, and Dollar Tree at 9,000 square feet. That's 96,000 square feet pre-leased. And then we have several, there's 48,000 square feet of other inline retail that I indicated that we had lease negotiations ongoing, but at this point, we're unwilling to go any further with them because of the financial implications.
Of the ones that you mentioned in your studies, how many of those would you consider a primary sector of business?
Could you elaborate?
Meaning, there's no competition in town?
Hobby Lobby, Shoe Department, TJ Maxx. I don't think you have any national credit tenants of this nature. I think your next competition would be in Bismarck.
In my dealings with TIF programs, we hear a lot from businesses where they feel it's going to compete, and again, why, why we would pay those expenses and not their expenses when they were in business. I know Bismarck tried to get that TIF for their downtown and it failed. And I think last week in the election, I think their mayor was removed because of his support for it. And I'm not so sure if there wasn't a city commissioner that might have been removed from office because of it. But I think we're talking maybe two different programs. I mean, even though it's TIF, Bismarck is Bismarck and Dickinson is Dickinson. We've lost, you know, Herburgers, we've lost clothing stores. You know, I see some of your business on there. You mentioned a movie theater. There's a brand new one supposedly going up right across the street. You know, so those are issues that we're going to have to look at. And I don't know the answer today and I, maybe my partners do, but for me, we're going to need to listen to the community a little bit on this and see what they want to do. I think it's a wonderful project. I was excited about it in 2011, I think it was, right? So a lot of things have changed. I guess we'll just have to...
We're very cognizant of the fact that you are working with the theater in the downtown district. We're also very aware that we wouldn't do anything to take competition from downtown or take customers from downtown, which is why we are very in touch with your public personnel on that. And we were communicating with Sean when he was negotiating with your theater personnel to make sure that that was under contract so that we weren't in competition with your theater. One thing to note is that our tenants are not cannibalizing on your existing sales. We are bringing new jobs and new employment and new services to the community.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
The one thing that I failed to mention and highlight is the fact that we wanted this project not to cost the city anything in the long run. So the taxes that I'm talking about, the roughly $30 million of taxes over the next 15 years are totally new tax dollars generated by this project. There's a little bit of green belt tax on the property at this time, but that's essentially all that property is generating for the city. And you can see that once it's fully developed, it's $2.25 million each year in new revenue to the city, which is why we wanted to make this proposal to you. We also recognize that you need to discuss this amongst yourselves, amongst the community, but we also want you to know that we have put off these anchor tenants as long as we can. So the sooner we can get a direction one way or the other, we can all move on to what's best for the city.
Ms. Murtha, for clarification, will you explain the tax increment financing program through the Department of Commerce and then what responsibilities the city has if it does include, in fact, create a district?
I can try. Mr. President, Members of the Commission, the, there are several requirements for the creation of a TIF. There are, there's also several policy decisions that need, that are inherent in part of that process because it does require a public hearing, a community feedback, the city, and I'm highlighting here, but there's a multi-layered step. You have to identify your plan and be able to describe how this project or district can fit within that plan and promote that plan. How you determine what factors, or it would be a policy decision, what factors you're going to look at in designating a district or a project and how you're going to consider that. So there is definitely long-term impact. It's, and there's a public, a public communication requirement. And then you get to the actual funding of it. And there are several ways that you can fund it that are available to you, but they are restrictive. They're not as expensive as in other states. So there is an ability to use, to have an additional tax put on, but that itself requires a, having that specific tax item on the ballot voted on. You can do it through bonds. And this sort of leads me into the staff recommendation that we were going to bring to you, which was that because this type of project has so many factors that require policy input, that staff was requesting the commission for guidance on, would you like to develop a policy? And would you like us to bring back to you a proposal that outlines, here's what you can do and here's our feedback on, within those options of what you can do, staff's perspective on some of those factors that would need to be considered, and that that be done prior to deciding one way or the other for a particular project to avoid that long-term or after the fact as Commissioner President, why, why, excuse me, Commissioner Senator, why, why me and not you? So why this project and not the next project? If you have the policy in place, you can evaluate all projects along the same lines with the same factors. And so that was going to be, that was going to be our recommendation.
One quick point, just to follow up on what you just said. Why me, not you is the big question. And the main thing is, public infrastructure that is rightfully, could be developed by the city if it was in the city's overall master plan to develop a certain area or have an area developed, knowing that private developers have to invest money in the area, but sometimes cities provide infrastructure to that. So that's essentially what we're asking for, is for you to look at that infrastructure. That's the main difference between the locals who are already in place, is there going to be new public infrastructure for them and would you be willing to do that? Now, I don't want the staff or the city to go to a lot of extra effort unless you choose to really research whether you want to do the tax increment financing. Because if we do just the TIF financing that's allowed in the state of North Dakota, it doesn't accomplish what we need to get this project moving. So please don't use a lot of time unless it's something you want to do long-term. The big question for us is, is investing in the infrastructure in this sector of your community worthwhile to you to go out for a bond that is totally paid off by the development itself?
We have partnered with private companies out there without bonding.
Okay.
So it wasn't this large. It was water infrastructure and so on. Now, if we bond something like this, I don't know what our bonding capabilities are. I know we have bonds out there, we paid off some and so on, where we are at our limit and what it would do to our rating and so on. But, you know, just so we don't get off on a whole different thing, this is strictly infrastructure bonding.
Yes, yes.
Okay. We aren't going to be bonding the buildings.
Nope, not at all. All the private, private development part is on us.
Exactly.
The one thing I wanted to point out over here is that number right there, I don't know if you can see it or not, but the total infrastructure, common public infrastructure cost is roughly 9.2 million, okay? Our first phase development is going to cost us another 24 and 1/2 billion. And at today's market value, we will lose $3 million on this first phase. And that does not include the 9.7 million that we've already invested. We're willing to do that because we think the overall development over the next 10, 15 years here, we want to be here, we want to make this happen, and we're willing to take that hit for this first phase because we think the overall project is worth it to us and definitely worth it to the city. So we're not, again, that's why we're asking the city to help with the infrastructure, the public infrastructure, not the private infrastructure, because we're already taking a loss. And that's based, if any of you are aware, that's based on a seven and a half cap retail value, which is generally what most appraisers would appraise a brand-new project like this for. So we're kind of taking it, certainly we're going to try to whittle that down so we're not losing as much on the first phase, but we're willing to take that hit on the first phase to make the overall thing work.
If I can, Ron Radden, hello, everybody. Been in here for nine years. What we're asking for, fairways, the city road, okay? The road out here, most of the infrastructure on all this is a state road. And that's where all the utilities, that's where all the money's going, is on the state and federal roads. So we're not asking for ours, none of ours. Oh, there you go.
If you go back one, that's what he was, right there.
Okay. All the blue, well, the purple, I should say, is where the money's going. Nothing on inside of the project. Inside of the project's going to be about a $26 million project, which doesn't net already. What we're asking for is what would normally be done, and when Sean was here and Ed Kurton six years ago, you guys had the business loop already ready to go. In other words, we were going to put the money in the business loop. I think you guys had 21 million to go all the way down in front of the new overpass you put in, which I think you lost. What we're asking for is to do what's in purple up there along 94, the purple coming up through, which is the city road, which is fairway, and then tie all the utilities in and the roadway that connects it. Like I told Sean, and I could sit down with Mr. Kuvas, we'd go back eight or nine years. We could go down and nick it down a little bit, but the asphalt's the only thing that would really be left on the partial that's going to the south. Everything else should be able to be bonded through the city. I wanted to tell you, five years ago, I had this exact same conversation in West Valley. It's when I had met Lisa, she was working for Smith's. We went in, we asked for a $5 million redevelopment agency over there. The city chose not to do it. We lost the store, lost the development. Not a year later, they called up because Albertson's ended up changing to Fresh Market and they lost three stores and they lost about a half a million dollars' worth of revenue a year. And I explained to them, I says, "Look, we brought them in, we had them ready to go. You guys threw us out." I have never quit working on this ever since Cashwise did what they did to us. I think it was a bad deal for the city because the mall would have rebounded eventually. And Cashwise, when we had that out there, we were bringing four national tenants out on the front pads. You got one of them over in Roar's. It was Buffalo Wings. We had all the strips done and we were bringing a bunch of these retailers. Now, I finally got all of them. I've been working with these guys for years. We had Sportsman's coming before they went up to Williston. And I couldn't ever get them all put together at one time. Everybody was saying, "If you can get TJ and Hobby Lobby and the rest of them, then we'll all come because now you got a center." Well, we finally done that. Well, at the last ICSC, I sat with every one of these guys and they're going, "You got a pin in your briefcase, Radden? We're going to get this thing signed because they've got a, they're all stock, you know, internationally stock traded, and they put how many stores they're going to put out, and this is slated for next year." The problem is, they'll have dark sides that they can't open up during a certain month because of Thanksgiving or Christmas. And Dickinson, we got such a short window. The good thing is, when I, where I'm putting them is where we were putting Cashwise and the pads pad-ready. And MDU's working with us on the power and the gas. The water's already been looped, everything's ready to go. The problem is, without the funding, and that's what I was saying, we don't need the TIF. I wouldn't even go there. It doesn't make sense. It doesn't even come close. But you could bond for your roads, not ours, for the infrastructure. And we're bringing, I don't know, I didn't remember what Lisa said as far as how many people it is going to employ. And these are good jobs. These are high-paying jobs. And the tax revenue is incredible off of it and it starts the project again. We've got the corner pads already pretty much taken if we get it. Yes, we are showing a theater up there. I'm well aware of what Brian's been trying to do here for years. I had a theater showing on this eight years ago. And he met with the group that I brought in and showed them that he was developing and going to build one over behind the Walmart at the time and ran them off. Apparently, you guys are using redevelopment money or whatever you're doing to get them in over here, which is great. I lived here for four years. Boeing was the only thing I could go do at night or go sit in a restaurant. I need you guys to think hard and fast on this because I can't hold them off anymore. And it's been so touchy to try to get all these tenants put together. And at the ICSC, I told them, I says, "Well, it doesn't make economic sense to even try to go there unless we can get a TIF." Now, I use the word TIF. I know we can't go there. It made everybody real nervous for going, "Wait a minute, Radden, we're spending money on this thing." We've got all the engineers working on it, we've got all the engineering back. So we got to kind of have a direction of which way you guys would like to see us go on this project.
There's another aspect of this that comes to my mind now because, you know, I'm thinking back six years ago when you had your plan and there were others that came in with a plan also. And theirs was contingent on this infrastructure coming in. What I'm talking about is the other business that were developing to the west of this here yet. Yes. And they were contingent on this infrastructure.
Yeah, and they were always wanting us to pay for it.
So who knows? I mean, we were talking neighborhood developments up there, that type of thing also, you know. So I like the infrastructure plan on this, the TIF, we'll have to get up to speed on. But I like this plan. I... to speed on, but I like this plan, I, it's different from what people are going to think about a TIF when they read about it.
Right.
And that's why I want to stress, it's infrastructure only, okay? It's for the city to continue to grow, and that's what makes it a little exciting for me, well, exciting for me to see this here finally come to fruition.
One last thing I'd like to point out is, this is the first phase. This first phase alone, if it's completely built, will totally pay back the city in income without developing anything else. Now, if we develop the whole thing, then the city will be making a lot of money off of the entire project, but this area alone, by itself, completely pays back a bond by the funds that are generated to the city. Property tax, sales tax, hotel, restaurant tax, all of those taxes combined would cover the debt service on the bond.
And what everybody's got to remember is, we're not taking monies from the school district or anything else, we're creating the new money. It's creating itself. And five years ago is like a blink of an eye, ask Craig.
What kind of timeline are you looking for an answer from us?
Tomorrow. No, the problem is, at the ICSC last month, to get the stores going, I got to sign the contracts, I mean, in the next week or two.
We have a, um, excuse me.
Lisa's been the one working with all the attorneys.
We have a drop-dead date in September to sign these leases or we lose our tenants. And to just piggyback on what Ron said, these leases all have a co-tenancy requirement, they all have to be in occupancy with one another or they go away. So, if Hobby Lobby doesn't go, none of them go. TJ Maxx has to be there, Hobby Lobby has to be there, Dollar Tree has to be there. These are all co-tenants in common. So, they're all on the hook with one another, and we've all got them committed to go at the same time. So, we've got to sign these leases within 60 days.
Okay, so my next question would be to the counselor, can you get us educated with the materials and information we need in the next two to four weeks?
Well, I, yeah.
Commissioner Snyder, I, you know, I, we're kind of bouncing back and forth on the TIF, but I think we can agree, the TIF is...
Off the table.
Yeah, it's off the table.
Off the table. What they are asking for is...
Basically, for us to build a road.
$9.25 million either bond or a, for us to put the money for the, the road and infrastructure that goes in there. And at least I've had a chance to attend ICSC on a few occasions as well, as we were recruiting businesses in, and so I know how it goes from the LOI to the lease commitment and, and where you're at with that. And you had remarked that you had signed 10-year leases with the tenants, is that what I picked up from your conversation, or?
I, let's see, we have one five-year lease with a five-year option, the rest of them are 10.
Okay, so...
Actually, it is a 10-year lease with a five-year termination right, one of them is, but the rest of them are five.
Okay.
Or, rest of them are 10, excuse me.
Okay. So, I see this as a good opportunity for the community. What, what I have trouble with is, we're looking at, and this was your proposal, not ours, is the, the 15-year bonding, when you have 10-year leases in a retail environment that is challenging at best. And part of your old signs, you had had Herberters and J.C. Penney's as tenants that were coming into this back when. You had Cashwise as a tenant that was coming in, and so even if they have leases in hand, it's hard to have a lease in hand without a commencement date, and so there are a lot of unknowns. So, what they're basically asking us to do is upfront the money for the infrastructure going in, but there are no guarantees that any of this will come to fruition. And that's a big gamble. You know, if you have leases in hand and you can sit down and do your return on investment calculations, and a bank isn't willing to loan you the money, so you come to the city and you want the taxpayers to take that gamble to loan the money instead, that's a hard bridge for me to cross, that, that we would put the taxpayer money at risk, build out the infrastructure, and still take the risk of having it not come to fruition.
We wouldn't do that unless they signed. We wouldn't come to you and pursue it if we didn't have them ready to sign. And we could have them all sign, subject to you guys willing to fund your own roads. So, that's incorrect. There's no way I'd have you guys spend $9 million and say, "Oops." Cashwise was an oops. Nobody knew that Kmart was going to leave. No more than the oops for us, because I, you know, we spent almost $8 million in there, and the day we were supposed to sign, they pulled them up over here, which, like I said, was a shame for the city and us, because with that development, we would have been off and running, and you'd had two big developments with tax base. But what I want to reiterate is, these things, if you guys give us a nod and say, "Yeah, we're going to go ahead and make it work for you," we'll deliver the leases.
We have the language drafted today that has a caveat in there, that the leases are signed, subject to the city's being able to support Five Diamond in the development of the infrastructure. If that doesn't happen, the leases are terminated. It's not done, but it can be done.
I've been afraid to bring it up anymore, I brought it up to TJ Maxx, that I was trying to get a TIF, and he just went, "Whoa, wait a minute, you're going to put a special improvement district on us?" I said, "No, I totally..." settled him down, and he says, "We thought this was a done deal, that all the infrastructure was going in." I says, "The infrastructure will go in," so I just kind of tabled it. Since then, we've seen how dangerous it is to play that game. We don't want to play the game. We thought we'd come here, ask you folks if you want these tenants here. If you guys say yes, and we'll work on your own infrastructure, is what we're asking, and if you can, we'll go back and we're going to go ahead and sign them all with that exception. So, they will be signed, Clayton, it won't be a maybe or an if. And these guys are national tenants. I mean, we've already spent over and above $300,000 just in legal fees with these guys to get these documents, and they're done, they're ready to sign.
Mr. Kuvas, have you done any, just cost analysis on that road? If, you know, prior to when we were talking about Baron Vista, to just finish Fairway, what, what that would cost the city? I, I know there's some, there's some design in there that would be probably preferred by the developers, the roundabout I can see in there and stuff, but I'm just wondering if there was a straight road, Fairway to Baron Vista, which I don't think is going to come to any development anytime soon, but have you, have you done any cost?
President, Deck, or Commissioners? We have not. I was just kind of retracing in my mind what the utility layout was, and it generally follows what Mr. Raden had here in purple, with the, the street being Fairway, the main public street. As I recall, the, the development agreement that we have in place from 2014 showed that smaller north-south road coming off the roundabout being a private road, public utilities underneath it, water and sewer, and then water and sewer crossing across the business loop tying into our water and sewer mains that the city already has in place. The, the, I guess the, the big caveat for myself would be, the large purple line that runs along the business loop, there were improvement concepts being developed back in 2014, kind of through the DOT for this development, and like Mr. Raden had said, those are really off the table now. And maybe we need to, to scale back and rethink that, I don't know that all those improvements are needed. It was going to be a phased approach to widening the business loop, regardless who or when, who paid for it or when it was going to happen. But I, I did just jot down some numbers, it looks like about, in my estimation, 1,500 feet of roadway that are, you know, critical. It might not be the entire, entire plan of, of infrastructure, but 1,500 feet of roadway, that being Fairway, and roughly 4,100 feet of water and sewer, and then storm sewer as well, I'm sure need to go in these, in these corridors. And then I, I hope this includes the box culvert discussion, we, you know, it's in really rough numbers, we have half of that main drainage improvement installed, another half to, to be installed. So, I'm assuming that's a part of the 9.2 million dollars.
It is, Craig.
Because just a gut, gut feeling of mine was that, I didn't think we had maybe $9.2 million of improvements, public infrastructure improvements.
That's what I, that's what I was thinking. To me, that's a lot of money for, I'm looking at these roads.
Yeah, I, I think first step would be, we'd really sit down with, with this team's group of engineers, who I think have done a, a good job for, for the developers, sit down with them, saying, "What exactly are we looking at?" And, and maybe, maybe it's a matter of readjusting costs. When, when a lot of this was put together, we were always talking about the Bakken premium, and hopefully, while that may not have went away, that, that, that effect of the boom has lessened our, our infrastructure costs. So, I'd be happy to sit down with, with their engineers, you know, reevaluate what we're looking at, and, and maybe paring this down a little bit. Like I said, some of those improvements on the business loop specifically, are they absolutely necessary for, for Phase One? And that's not certainly my decision, it's, you know, the, the, the commission's decision and, and this development group's decision, to what, what, you know, they feel they absolutely have to have to, to make the development work. So, I, I, long, long answer, but the, the short answer would be, no, I have not, you know, ran those numbers myself to kind of get a, a real comfort level with $9.2 million.
What we've done is, we've had Martin bid it, we've given you guys three different bids, one from Martin, one from Tracy Tooze, and one from the engineers, and they're all within $200,000 of the 9 million. Last time we were out here in March, I brought the numbers, showed you guys, "Look, we could leave the canal open from Fairway South, that's something we could work with." I was talking to Sean, he says, "Okay, what about the infrastructure?" Because Craig's right, that, the road that runs north and south, that one, I would like to dedicate to the city, so it is a city infrastructure road, which would open it up to the rest of the, you know, which opens the whole development up. I told Sean, we were talking, I says, "Look, if you don't want to pave that from the roundabout to the south, that's fine, but all the rest of the infrastructure, all your sewer and water and storm goes down there." We've already got the detention basins built and done. If I can re-track a little bit, there is a Corps of Engineers problem on this, a FEMA problem on this, that we have cured. When I first started this, there was a ditch going through there, we asked to move it with the Corps of Engineers, that's when the, the ditch became a canal, became a culvert. We've got that ratified, now the Corps of Engineers is happy with the detention basin down there, because now they've got wetlands, that's what they were concerned about. We got Rita to sign the FEMA application, so the FEMA's going through, we're getting it off. Eight years of work on this thing, and we finally pulled off these tenants, and I really don't want to run them off by saying we can't afford to build it. And I think if we sat down with Craig and says, "Okay, if the city roads, if you guys will take care of 94," and I know that's a state road, but get with the group over there, and the fairway is a city road, and put the utilities in, we can come in and put the 26 million and get the project up and going. The good thing about the project is, everybody's excited about it at the ICSC. Everybody says, "If you get it started, if you get these anchors coming..." We've already got Petco, PetSmart that's saying, "If you really pull it off, we're ready to go." We did have Sportsman's Warehouse that had circled back around as of two months ago and was all over it, and now, I guess, what's the one that just came in town?
Dunham's.
Yeah, so they're out. But the Petco, PetSmart's still there, we're working with a big anchor tenant that could possibly go to the south of the project, we've been working with them for years, but they think it's all pie in the sky as well. But your Menards is still doing very well up on the hill, and they don't piggyback with them, but they know, they like what their numbers are. So, I think the project, if we could get it going with this, it'll eventually blossom into what Andy's trying to show you. The good thing is, he's also showed you that just Phase One pays this bond off a lot quicker than what you think, just off if we didn't do anything else, but just what we're bringing to you. And it'll be hard-signed contracts that they can't get out of, Clayton.
Well, I look at when we did development north for the hub and them, and then we ended up needing to come back and do the infrastructure and build the road and come up with the specials on them and for the surrounding properties, because we didn't have the agreement upfront with the developer to handle those costs. So, tho, those were uncomfortable meetings, when you were telling other property owners what their bill was, even though it was improving their life, but they needed to do that. I like Craig's idea of, why would we go through and put in the whole $9.2 million of infrastructure upfront, which is to your benefit, when we could simply phase in or start building in enough of the road and infrastructure to get through the first phase, and then as that develops, tax money is rolling in and you're filling in spots, and then it's time to expand. And so, it, it can't be from the get-go that the city would take the onus of $9.2 million of, even if you say it's our own infrastructure, there's no reason we would do all of that upfront when the simple solution would be to build the road into the property as far as it needs to go, and as those properties come to fruition. So, it's, it's a two-way street, there's some proof on your side, and there's the...
And we would go ahead and sign and start building the footings while you were doing it, to make sure that everybody knew it was going in.
Exactly.
And this is exactly what you just said, I want to repeat myself. When we were out here last time, four months ago, I sat down with Sean and we talked with Craig, I says, "Here's the numbers, we don't have to do the canal from the south, it needs to go in on the north, of course, to finish it, because those pads is what, where you're going to bring a lot of your tax base off on it. The road to the north, all the way over, doesn't have to be put in from right there over, that can stay out. The asphalt can stay out on the one coming to the south, all the way down, from there all the way. I mean, we can have that, Craig's got the numbers, it wouldn't take very long to readjust them. This is a total on the whole project. Clayton, I totally agree with you, if we just did the street, the part of the canal that needs to be fixed to go under the road, and the roundabout, all the road all the way up to, I forget what the gentleman's name is, that was going to put the mall up there that...
The Vista?
The Ver Vista.
Oh, I don't think you have to worry about that.
No.
So, it's my understanding that that $9.2 million includes financing?
It does include about a million and a half of financing costs and interest.
And so, my numbers have been adjusted based on a new concrete bid from when? From Willie?
Really? That's how they know you.
So, it's 7.9 base cost, plus financing, 9.2.
Can we go back to that numbers sheet? Whoever was doing that?
Okay, so the 7, 7 million, 912, that's the actual hard cost, right there.
And then, we had some soft cost, design engineering, and there was a million, $50,000 in financing costs as an estimate. So, the hard cost is 7.9 million for everything.
In purple.
In purple. And again, I, I think it's very prudent to stage it and see how we perform, but we, we do need the city to help us kick it off.
And Craig, I can email you my cost estimate on that site plan for the shared overall improvements, which is the purple, for you to take a look at.
That'd be great.
Okay.
You know in construction, right?
Yep.
No, we've been using all local contractors, all local engineers on this. Everything I did prior to this was all with local. We didn't bring anything from Salt Lake.
I think as, as a commission, we need to wait till we get staff runs the numbers, we can look at doing this possibly in a partial manner that, like I said, I, I just don't see, or we would have to invest $9 million to, to finish these roads.
Right. Well, and you guys are going to be meeting next week for budgeting. This is an un... This is an unplanned expense for this budget season, and so you have to pencil out if it can fit into the budget, too.
No, you'd probably have to bond for it. Your budget's too tight. I've spent in many budget meetings through the four years that I lived here, I'd come in here and sit and watch, see what was going on, and that's when you were getting a lot of oil money and trying to spread it around. Now without that, I'm sure you're tight. This would definitely have to be a bond that you'd have to purchase to go ahead and put the city improvements in and take it over time with the tax increment paying it off with us on the back end, in my eyes. Craig, maybe I'm wrong. Like, they showed you up there, it's a 7.9. You take out the culvert going down the rest of the way, the other road going to the north, you're probably talking a high six number, maybe six instead of nine. But what I would like to ask, is there any way that we could be put on the next agenda? Give Craig and Lisa a week to go through the numbers so we can at least head in that direction with these tenants? I can't hold them off anymore. You know, if I know you're going to work with us on it and we're going to make it work, we'll go ahead, we'll put the caveat in the leases, we'll sign them, we'll give them to you guys so you can give them to your attorney and she can read them, see that they're national tenants, they're worth billions of dollars, and they don't go backwards after they sign a lease, they go forward.
President Deckard, I had one question, and Mr. Radden may have just answered it, but, so we're talking about a bond as a financing mechanism, whether it's 9.2 or 7.9 or something less than that if we phase it, but the repayment of the bond would be still through tax increment?
Well, you guys would be getting the money. So all of a sudden, your taxes are going to go up another couple million a year. You work it out however you want on the numbers, you know what I mean, as far as repayment?
I don't think you're talking a TIF.
No, we're not talking a TIF. We're talking it's city expense and how we figure out how to handle it and how to pay.
Their payback would be considered a TIF. That's what they're asking.
Yeah, you don't use it as a TIF, but now all of a sudden, your tax base goes up in the city a couple million a year.
They're basically saying that we're going to recoup through sales tax and property tax to pay the bond. Plain and simple. And that's why we need some hard numbers on what we can do. And Linda sits down with Craig, runs some numbers. Our next meeting is July 10th. It is not July 3rd.
Because of the 4th, yeah.
Because of the 4th. It is July 10th. So that would actually give them about three weeks roughly to work on this. Plus, we are going through budget, so that's eating up three days of a lot of staff. But we do, we do need the information to make an informed decision as a commission. We do need hard numbers. And I understand that you are on, you know, a certain timeline, but we also have to make the right decision and gather the information from staff and allow them to get us something before the 10th that we can.
Okay, when I talked to Sean last, that's what he told me they were doing, you know, because he says, do we have to do the whole thing?
Mr. Radden, I'll just let you know right now, any conversation you had with Mr. Kessel?
Yes.
You can probably throw out.
I'm understanding that because that's what he told me they were already doing. When I came here tonight, I thought you guys...
I'm just letting you know.
Got it.
Thank you.
So you can announce this so we can be on the 10th and we'll get with Sean and, or Sean. Craig, you can throw your water bottle at me later.
And Mrs. Carlson and Craig and Mrs. Murtha and the rest of staff, you guys can start. I think eventually, too, we're, even though we're not, we're no longer talking a TIF for this, we do need to develop a TIF policy eventually as a city. So that's in the long run. Any questions, the other commissioners that haven't spoke? For them?
I have one quick question for you. Would you like us to prepare a list of what we think could be carved out efficiently for you guys to start?
Prepare, carve it out and get it to staff.
Great.
We have saved Craig quite a bit of time.
Right.
And I will get you a set of the symbols and my cost breakdown.
Okay, that would be great.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your time.
I wish that was it.
I know where we're going.
Yeah, no, we got to take care of the canal issue. Lisa?
Okay. The next item that we have up for discussion is the stormwater wet resolution issue. We have prepared a memorandum for the Board of Commissioners to review as well as a form of resolution. As you are aware, we had contracted, we have contracted with Brad Martin to go out and fix the repair. It is our understanding that Dwayne, the Storm, Chief Stormwater Operator, and Dwayne Sandvik, I believe, of the State Health Department went out on May 30th and performed that inspection. And absent one minor repair, they signed off on the repair. And to that end, we prepared this memorandum based upon the events of last year and the fact that at no harm to the city and at no cost to the city, we are asking for full waiver and resolution of the stormwater violations. The fact of the matter is, in my personal opinion, Raden Development did work with Dwayne and Craig last year and came to a resolution last year in the fall of September and agreed on a timeline for repair, was unable to make the repair until spring. That repair has been made to the city's satisfaction, and hopefully, this matter can now be resolved.
Mr. Kubis? Yeah?
May I just ask that initially, when this was put on the agenda, my understanding was it was for the TIF presentation. This is an additional item which is included. Mr. Zastopol is not here tonight. I did have a conversation with him approximately a week and a half ago, prior to him leaving for vacation, and there was, as you indicated, one minor area of repair. And I know Mr. Kubis has been following up on it, and I would appreciate if the commissioners would hear Mr. Kubis's commentary on it and that also indicates that, I believe that it would be important to hear also from Mr. Zastopol and his...
I have some updating information.
Do you have it as well?
Oh, please.
I did speak with Mr. Martin this evening. He is in Canada, Brad. With respect to that repair, he has been in communication with Dwayne. His comment with respect to that happened after the city received three and a half inches of rainfall. The area has been hydroceded, and once the growth has occurred significantly enough for him to go back and make that repair, he will do so. And that was his comment. Unfortunately, he cannot be here tonight, so...
Mr. Kubis?
President Deckard, commissioners, my only comment on it, I was out there, the work that was done, this is, goes back a month or so, was, was as agreed to. We have had a couple rains since then. It sounds like there's been some subsequent, smaller, but subsequent erosion to what was repaired. I really think in the big picture, it really lends itself to the point that the box culvert needs to be installed because the slopes are steeper than anyone can maintain, that they're not impossible to get vegetated, but they're proving themselves to be difficult to have vegetation catch and start growing on these slopes. So I really would like to wrap that into the infrastructure plan, even though it might not be essential for the development that we've talked about earlier to occur. No one really has the time to keep chasing after erosion that happens because the channel was left in a state that's ready to install a box culvert, not to be maintained over a length of time. So I know the development team doesn't want to keep chasing this down year after year. I think the ultimate solution is really install the culvert and, you know, have it just run in the pipe and not worry about the erosion control issues anymore. So again, to their issue, the resolution, I haven't had a chance to read through it, so I really won't comment on that tonight, but I would like to see that the drainage channel be finished out as soon as possible so we can not have this conversation again in the future.
That's why we were hoping the canal would be part of what we were talking about earlier. And the vegetation on the canal, I wish you guys would go out and do a small field trip and just drive by it. The vegetation has grown in all over it. The matting we just put in isn't any longer than the length of this room, and it's a full mile. Where they, where we had our little problem wasn't any more than a three-foot, but it was a trench where it ran off, but there was no oils. The code violation that we were marked with was damaging oils getting into the storm drain, ruining it, and there was from equipment on site. There's never been, there hasn't been any equipment on site since 2014. So the code, I always denied and fiercely says this was wrong, but we were going to fix it. I came out here a year ago. We entered into a contract with Martin. Martin didn't get it done because of winter conditions. They got it done this spring, so no harm, no foul. I thought I could take care of this at staff level. I was told we had to bring it in front of the council. We're bringing it in front of the council. We'd like to get this beyond us and go on and hopefully have a great relationship with these anchor tenants we're bringing.
Mr. Balisteros, you have some information?
So Mr. Radden has stated, Adam Balisteros is a water utility manager, so Dwayne Zastopol has been taking care of this for several years. I have an activity log of the instances. Mr. Radden had stated that he hadn't been contacted since 2017, and that's actually whenever he'd started receiving the fines. And so Dwayne has a correspondence with Mr. Radden from July 2016, where he'd talked to Craig Kubis about compliance issues with Dickinson Hills in July, contacted Mr. Radden about time to complete the non-compliance issues, started the process of verbal warning, non-compliance. July of 2016, sent an email to Ron Radden needing some information. September, left a message on his voice machine, and there's attachments also with this, and if you'd like to see it, I can certainly give that to you. Sent another email in October for meet for an inspection. State Health Department starts looking at our MS4 permit in regard to non-compliance with, and that's November of 16. Looks like there's an internal meeting here with Dwayne Schwab with, I guess, Raden representative, our Mr. Zastopol, and then Dwayne Sandvik from State Health to see about what he needed to do for compliance. November 16, met with Midwest Erosion Control to fix the stormwater issue, wasn't fixed at that time. Sent email of non-compliance in April of 17, contacted Mr. Radden in May of 15. Secretary answered, said he was in a meeting, called him back, was not called back. May, a week later, and re-inspected Dickinson Hills. There's an email with attachment of the site inspection. Sent enforcement letter to Ron Radden in June of 2017. June of 2017, again contacted about enforcement letter. He stated that he was going to come down to meet with the city staff. Reminder letter to Mr. Radden again, final notice in September, September 2017, meets with Martin Construction, and that's whenever some of the fines begin to accumulate at that point. So October 2017, call Martin Construction. And then this is the part where I'm in agreeance with Mr. Radden as far as what starts happening here. Contacted Martin Construction, said he's backed up right now, but the project is still in the books. November, Martin Construction called to see if he's going to do the project. Said he's backed up right now, but the project is still in the books. So this is a state of the project that at this point is complete, just with a certain, few certain things. Also, as Engineer Kubis has stated, that's probably not the long-term solution for the maintenance of it, to have that one-to-one slope there. So a number of things. We've been corresponding with Mr. Radden over a length of time, and I find it interesting that he wants you to make a decision very quickly, and we've been contacting for two years on something that could have been taken care of in a week's time that has been taken care of. So we certainly want, this is what initiated the compliance, was the fine. I think without the ability to find him, there would not have been compliance for some period of time. That's what started the correspondence with him. So that's the information I have, and if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them for you.
Okay, not to disagree, but I'm going to disagree. 6/6 of 17, notified the city, got ahold of me, told me there was a appliance problem out here. Got ahold of Dwayne, had Dwayne come out, meet with him to find out what was going on on 6/27. We had a meeting. I flew into town, met with Craig Kubis, Sean Kessel, Dwayne. We sat back here, we talked about it. That was back in 6/27. Also, we went out and met on site, decided what to do. There wasn't that much damage. I mean, you know, the hillside had caved in a little bit. I couldn't believe what we were, you know, going through all this with a little bit of drainage runoff problem that was there. Anyway, we've been going back and forth, that's true. But 7/15, 7/5, the conversation, 9/19, we met on site again with Brad, I'm going to say Martin, it's Riley, and Dwayne Schwab, or Dwayne, your guy, and discussed exactly what had to be done. We signed a contract in 17 with the Martin Group to take care of it. In October, we had phone conversations to make sure he was getting it done. He said that he had met with Dwayne, your Dwayne, and that everybody with Craig, that everybody had decided they'd wait till spring to get it taken care of, that there was nothing damaging or going to hurt, that, you know, nothing was going to happen between that time. 12/14/17, had another conversation with Sean Kessel, sorry regarding it. Sean said he was going to take care of it, which they never did. The next thing I know, I get a $30,000 a month fee or bill. In-house, Brad Martin Construction with Craig Kubis, in an attempt to resolve the stormwater issues, retain and show the plan. They got it to me. We went ahead. We had already signed the contract with Kubis back in 17. 2/9, we met with Mac Hall. He came in, met with the city, trying to help us out with it, you know what I mean, because I hired him to help us with the FEMA over there. So Mac come in town here and tried to talk to everybody about it. And then 2/12, that's when we received the letter from the attorney saying that you guys were going to hold us to $30,000 a month penalty. I think it's been erroneous from day one. Didn't want to go here with you guys, but we fixed it. No harm, no foul. Like Craig says, they are steeper than what they wanted. Craig always wanted a two and a half or a three-to-one even at the time, but then it takes that frontage and goes almost 150 feet before you get to a commercial center. So we all thought it was in the best behalf of the city and the development and everything to put it in a box culvert. We've already spent $2 million to get it to where it is at this time, just on the box culvert itself. So to hit us $30,000 a month through the months, that there was no problem whatsoever, let alone through the whole thing, we're hoping that now that we fixed it on our dime, we can waive it and we can go on.
So just as Mr. Radden said, that it was initially a small problem, and we've asked him to fix it for two years, and the only mechanism that we have in order to get people to comply is the fine. And so if you take away our ability to do that, or developers see that as it'll be waived eventually, I mean, then there could be non-compliance up to the point of whenever they're ready or have the dollars to do it. And so that's the only thing that initiated the compliance with it. So we've been talking to him about it for two years. It is probably, just like you said, about the length of the room. Why it wasn't taken care of two years ago, that's beyond me. We just have the finding mechanism in order to take care of that. To this point, it's to the satisfactory condition as far as our compliance and the ordinance goes. However, just as Mr. Engineer Kubis has said, it's not the long-term solution. So that's to be discussed at that level, but that's kind of how everything came about and I guess the legacy of it.
And we did respond, and I did sign a contract a year and a half ago.
I understand, Mr. Radden, but what, the company you signed a contract with doesn't, they don't perform their duty with you, that's...
Yeah, it falls on me.
It falls on you.
Okay.
And I just want to clarify with Mr. Balisteros, that we met with you in March of 12 and...
Not with me personally. March of 12?
March.
March 12th of this year?
Of this year.
Okay, because I wasn't here in March, in 12.
No, 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 no.
Yes. And the issue with regards to the stormwater violation was discussed, and we were directed to bring a resolution to the city.
The city council.
By whom?
By us. I was there.
Yeah, you guys were all there and...
It must have been after I left that day.
Because the fine could not be waived without a resolution to the board?
The agreement was that they bring a resolution to the issue to us.
To the city council, and if we fixed it, it'll go away.
Resolve. Well, I mean, a resolution to the problem of the fine. Not a resolution, resolution, but...
I understood resolution, so that's fine, but that the fine would continue to incur until... until we resolved the issue, so this is why we brought it to you today. The fact of the matter is, is we have received instructions, or I'm sorry, we have received an email notification from both Duane Zastopol and Duane Sandvik, that they have inspected the property as of May 30th, and that it was to their satisfaction. And yes, it will be repaired when they saw that minor problem. Brad has been instructed to go out and fix that minor problem.
The only question, Mr. Kuvus, were we okay with the one-to-one slope, one of this...
No, like I said, that, to me, that's a, that's an interim slope to make a safe area to install the box culvert. The one-to-one slope, while it, while it's, you know, shaped up now, it's just...
That's what's causing the problem.
Yeah, it's really a tough slope to work on for maintenance or to get vegetation to grow in. And I guess I haven't been out there in the last three, because I was out there the day they were finishing up the work and hydro seeding. Everything at that time looked good, but of course, you need, you need the grass to grow too, so.
And it's all growed in, I mean, that's why I'd like you guys to go out there on a field trip and see how it's all growed in, and see the little bit that we have fixed. It was just erroneous that it was $30,000 a month fine for something on a code violation that was a wrong code violation in the very beginning. There was no equipment draining oil down into a storm drain, which was damaging the city's storm drain. So we could go on and on. The bottom line is, there was no problems, there was no harm to the city. We fixed it. We wanna be able to go on. Craig is 100% right that the slope was never intended to stay this long. We were putting the canal in, the culvert in, when the economy and everything tanked. But we're here today. We haven't went away. We're bringing a commercial development. We're asking for the help and on the canal. Because like I said, the canal was a ditch. And when we did the research and they did 100-year storm, and they went clear up past Roars Development up to the stoplight, they showed all that water coming down to the freeway, because that's where it comes. And with all the impervious development that's went on, it's increased, so the ditch became a canal, which became into the culvert. But we never had, never seen this coming, $30,000 a month penalty. And when he says I didn't respond, we called, we talked. Like I said, I had Duane Schwab meet him out there when it first happened, and we've got all our notes, just like they've got theirs. We've been trying, folks. There was nothing dangerous. It was a three-foot washout. I beg you to go out there and look at it, and it's been resolved. And we were told if we brought a resolution, we had to bring a resolution to the council, they couldn't take care of it at staff level. So we've done that. We're asking a reprieve of the fine.
Mr. President, you looking for a motion?
I think there's still discussion to happen, right?
I think there is.
We haven't heard from Sarah or Jason on the development or anything.
Well, and I don't think, I don't think that, that, even though you think there's no harm done, that it has taken time. And people's time is important. Just like everything that you guys do is based upon your return on investment, right? Well, we have to account for everybody's time and the time that was invested to get this remedied.
I guess. You know, for me, I don't know if I'm ready to act tonight, but I'd like to see some kind of synopsis of how this all went down. I mean, and maybe we can talk about it at the next meeting, put it on the agenda, but I mean, from start to finish, I wanna see the ordinance that we're using to find them with. I mean, it's hard for me to make a decision just right now.
The ordinance is really easy to read real quick, and you can see that it wasn't, it was just an ordinance that they put on there, like you said, to get our attention, but it was not a violation of that ordinance.
I think what Commissioner Frederick was trying to say, it's very difficult for you guys to go back and forth and give us all these dates and communications and not actually have it in front of us so that we can assess really what happened here. And then I wanna, I'm not gonna be at the July 10th meeting, so I wanna offer some comments and thoughts for the proposed retail project. As I've been sitting here, a lot of thoughts are coming to me. I welcome economic development. I think it's crucial to any community to continue quality of life and to continue for us to see growth. However, if you drive around Dickinson, you will see a lot of empty storefronts. And my concern is, is bonding for a private project to support public infrastructure for a private project when we in fact have so many storefronts that we can't fill. So maybe I don't understand the commitments and the leases and how they work, but I'm a little skeptical to commit to debt when we don't really have anything solid in front of us, and we can't fill the stores that we have.
But you will, that's just it. You'll have solid contracts from billion-dollar companies.
I mean, look at the Roars Development.
Well, it was poorly designed.
Just something to think of.
Anyway, we did the resolution. We did what we were asked to do. We fixed the problem. Yeah, I guess if you wanna say, Duane, we owe him some wages for writing the letters, but we did respond. I came out. We did what we could. Like you said, Martin didn't get it fixed last year, but there was no harm to the city or the storm basin itself. And we fixed it. We've got a resolution on the docket to be voted on. I'd like to get a motion if we could. If it's denied, deny me.
Any further discussion?
I'd just like to hear from Jason on the development, because it's your wheelhouse.
It's, I mean, it's, it's very an interesting proposal. Like, I guess, I don't know what our past history is, and there's a lot of stuff for us to look at on the development side of it. I mean, you know, in the past, if we would put public infrastructure in, we either special it to somebody or do something and recoup the money that way. I mean, I don't, I mean, this is all brand new, so it's gonna be something that we'd need to definitely take some time to discuss and look at all the pros and cons and hear from the public. So I can't say which way I'm, I'm sitting on it tonight. As far as the stormwater resolution thing, I still would like to see a staff report, an ordinance that we fought, that we use to find them, just some kind of history on this. I mean, I did sit in the meeting last time they were out. Again, I was, that was the first time I'd ever heard of anything. I didn't even know we were finding them. So it's hard, you don't make any decisions like this second on that with, with just what they've offered with no staff report. So I would say we push that to the next meeting and have some...
And we can come up with that information for you. I just wanted to make sure. And I'm sorry for overwhelming with the information and listing the dates out. I just wanted to let everybody know that we've been working on this for a period of time, that we have our information. And we can certainly present that to you in a easier-to-read format than us just discussing it amongst their...
Yeah, just in some format other than verbal, so...
Absolutely. So my apologies for that part.
No, no, that's...
It'll be prepared in the future meeting.
So...
Mr. Kuvus, as you put together your report, I ask you to... Okay. Mr. Kuvus, as you put together your report, I ask you to go back and look at what the parameters were when the city became a partnership with Roars, for Roars Development, when we paid for X amount of dollars to put the water line underneath the interstate and up and soul, up and into that.
We can certainly go back and see what motions were made, missed meetings. I have a...
Was there any kind of written agreement, or was that a...
Yeah, I think we were involved to like 800,000 or something like that. Anyway, I think there is a, this has been done already.
The reason we did that, though, was not for Roars in particular, although they benefited from it, but we also knew that there was gonna be housing development there. We also knew the middle school, the school district...
Which is no different than what they're proposing.
Same thing.
That the school district had bought land and that the school was gonna be built there, and that we needed a way for the water to go through there. And they still took on, again, the lion's share of that infrastructure. I think if I remember right, it was, it was either 850,000, we did 450,000 of it, or it was 1.6, and we did 800,000. We did 50% of it, but it wasn't to put in streets or curb or gutter or any of that out in the Roars addition. It was to get the drilling under the interstate so that all the other things, the middle school and the housing and the apartments, and those things would benefit from it as well.
And I was here during those conversations with the council, and the city went ahead and adopted the motion to go ahead and pave and take care of it. It was called the truck loop to get the major trucks off of 22. And so that's why they did the overpass and all the improvements up past Roars Development. So you're right, is what I'm saying. I was in these meetings.
Well, if, if some, if a commissioner would like to make a motion on this resolution, I'd hear it. But if not, and to Mr. Frederick's recommendation of receiving some more information on this whole subject that we can...
I was gonna make a motion, but I'll refrain from it because some of you have asked for more information and...
So I think we'll address this in July 10.
I would just like to ask that the commissioners pay attention to a couple of points with respect to the violations. In my opinion, they are very broad. And two, the fines continue to occur over a period of time when no work could have occurred on the project. No hydro seeding could have happened on the project, which I mean during a period of winter. So I think the fines are overreaching. I think the violations are overreaching. And so if you are going to instigate violations, they need to be very specific. For example, they occur, or they pertain to hazardous waste, they pertain to construction equipment. And so I think that's what we're reacting to a lot of. So there are two violations each, are $250 per day. So I think they just need to be more specific, and then we can respond in a more educational manner, so.
Okay. Thank you. And I, I would say you're going to see us July 10.
Yes.
Thank you. I didn't wanna go there. I wanted to leave with a happy note with you guys, that we're bringing you some great tenants, not fight over this committee. Thank you, you guys.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. We're on to item 3C, and we're in the budget meeting dates. Mrs. Carlson?
Thank you, President Decker and commissioners. This is just to remind you that June 26th, 27th, and 28th is our budget meeting with the departments as a leadership team, and they will be presenting their budget to you. This is not a, any of these meetings are not where you would make any decisions at all. This is more informational for you. And with that, I wanted to let you know that we do have to up the time to start, so it's 7:45. We will be at the teen center at 7:45. The doors will open. We will start at 8 o'clock. And so I just wanted to make that, that's why I wanted to bring this forward to you. Also, to remind you that in July, which is the 17th and 18th, that is the executive team budget work session. And that is where we do make the decisions on what we will present for the August 7th budget meeting, for the August 7th commission meeting on the budget for 2019, which has to be sent in preliminary to the county. So that's my report on that.
Okay, thank you.
And I have the next one, too.
Just on the 17th, 17th and 18th, that will be at a different location, though?
Yes, that will be at the Public Safety Center.
Right, Public Safety Center, okay.
Thank you.
And then you had some reports, a report item that you added?
Yes. You were handed a support letter that we just received. This is from the ND DOT, and the city of Dickinson has been asked to participate in a letter comment opportunity to support the Theater Roosevelt Expressway, Highway 85, which is federally designated a high priority corridor on the national highway system. The letter states that the improvements of the highway design from a two-lane to a four-lane system, including the Long X Bridge, will significantly improve commerce and provide safety to our traveling public. So I'm letting you know that this has to be back to DOT by June 25th, so I'm asking for a support, a signature on the support letter.
All right. So I'd look for, if commissioners have you read through it and agree with it, I'd look for a motion for me to sign off on it.
I'd make a motion, we approve the support letter for the ND DOT.
We have a motion of support.
Second.
Second.
Second. Any further discussion? Now we'll vote. Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mr. Alvin?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. So we'll sign this. And then you had a, one other item.
Right. Thank you, President and commissioners. This is to do a suggestion of a meeting, and per our contract with the Stark Development Board, one of our obligations with the contract is to convey a joint meeting of a quorum of the Stark Development Board of Directors and a quorum of the City Commission to discuss long-term goals and the future business plan of Stark Development. And with that, I am asking for a suggestion. I would recommend, I'm recommending July 10th, which is the same day as our commission meeting, but to start about 2:30, to have this quorum, since we will be meeting anyway. I would need three commissioners, and we would meet here at the commission hall to have this quorum, if this also works with the Stark Development.
I know Mrs. Trustum is, she hasn't been that day, and she's already said she's gonna be absent. It would, the 10th, it would be the same day as the commission meeting on the 10th. We just come in early. So right now, I guess I'm looking over here. So it's us three over here that have to basically agree.
I wouldn't either.
Okay. Be able to make it. Mr. Steiner? All right. We'll do it the 10th.
I appreciate it.
2 o'clock?
2:30 is what I put it.
2:30.
I figured from 2:30 to 4:00.
Okay.
Reed will send invites for all this.
Yes. She knows, yeah.
Yeah, Reed will do it.
And that concludes my reports.
Okay, thank you. We will move on to public safety next. We have the fire department with a report.
President Decker, commissioners, at the last...
You're magnetic.
I am. It's a personality issue. At the last city commission meeting, you heard from a citizen expressing concerns involving some of the activities of the Big Six baseball event, more specifically the fireworks. I wanted to update you that we have met with representatives of Big Six. As a matter of fact, I believe there is one of their representatives present here this evening. We discussed the complaints with them, talked to them about refining and defining their fireworks display a bit, which we believe they have complied with. There was also a concern about shooting fireworks off on days where the wind would be excessive. And in addition to our monitoring, those wind events, they have purchased equipment to do the same. We've asked for documentation of that, so that it's, it's not just an arbitrary thing. At this point in time, they have met all the requirements as expressed in the fire code for a public fireworks display venue. There has been another citizen that has come forward with complaints. That citizen, I believe, is present here this evening, if you would like to hear that. At this point in time, the commissioners, there isn't anything under the fire code that would cause us to look at this venue at this point in time and say you must stop unless directed to do so by you commissioners after hearing complaints of the citizens. So we have met with them. They've answered everything we've asked them to do. They've answered everything we've asked them to do. There are still some complaints that will be coming forward.
Thank you, Chief Seba.
Thank you.
Commissioner, do we wish to hear the public complaint now, or wait to the issues of city concern? I think we should just address it now if he's in the audience, if there's somebody from the public.
No, it's fine, yeah.
The biggest thing is...
Did you state your name for the record?
Chuck Workhouse. The biggest thing is the noise. I live three and a half blocks away from the ballpark, and it feels like they're in my basement. But anyway, I think they went around this the wrong way. They should have got the opinion of the neighbors before they issued a permit. I understand Bob says all the, everything is in line so they can have a permit. But we're an old neighborhood, and I don't think you guys would like to have fireworks at 9:30 at night, and you're sitting on your deck having a beer, and you can't even hear the TV. But there's a lot of old people, and they can't come. But I'm getting old, too. But I don't mind fireworks. They got their place, and we went with a band in the city. And I think we ought to push that a little bit more. You know, like the Rough Rider days, that's fine. But what do you need fireworks after a ballgame for? It just doesn't make it, all you do is aggravate everybody else. That's all I got to say. Now, I can, well, it's going to go to September. But now Bob has talked to them, I called them, but I couldn't get anybody to answer the phone. But maybe it's going to quiet down. I don't know.
Okay. Well, thank you for bringing your concerns to the...
But I'd appreciate, if you go on a Saturday night, just go over and see how loud these damn things are.
Okay.
Okay?
We shall do so.
Thanks, pal.
Thank you.
And lots of luck to you.
Thank you.
And Carson Steiner, congratulations on your retirement.
Thank you.
All right. Commissioner, any...
Mr. President, is there something here from the Big Sticks? Because the citizen at the last meeting...
Come on up.
Said that every Saturday night, you have home games every Saturday night? Or how often will this be?
I'm Darcy Fossom. I'm the Director of Marketing and Community Relations. President Decker and the commission, we only have four more nights that we're going to have fireworks through the season. I'm not exactly what sure, what nights are. But we have talked with the fire department. We've issued flyers out in the community to let them know what nights those are. And they're only, it'd be between 9:15 and 10:15, depending on the length of the game. And they're only, right now, we've been timing, and it's about 10, 10 minutes, 15 minutes at the most that they'll be shooting on, so.
And is it only if you win, or is it regardless?
No, it's even, it's for the community and for the crowd that's there that we do it tonight. Like I said, out of the remaining games, we only have four more nights. And like, we had to cancel last weekend because of the rain delay. So it all depends on the weather, too. And if wind, if it's too windy, they won't be fired, you know? We're working with the fire department in that, that way, too.
Mr. Fossom, how many people do you usually have coming to your games on the...
It's, on average, right now, we're a little over 400. Last Friday, we had 844 was our biggest night so far. But it's ranges, we got a big range that week where we had six in a row was kind of tough because then people could kind of pick and choose. Most of our games now will be three-game stretches. It'll be Friday, Saturday, Sundays. I know next week, we have a four-day stretch where we have four enrolls.
I think this is such a difficult subject because, you know, you're providing such entertainment to some people, whereas there's another group of people that see it as a burden. And I know where I live, when there's a beer garden at Liquid Assets or Mavericks, I hear their music all night long, laying in bed. So I understand and I empathize with the people in that neighborhood. But I think, you know, if we were to answer to every noise complaint that happened, we wouldn't have a live at 5:00. We wouldn't have concerts throughout the community. We wouldn't be able to do a lot of things. So although I take that very seriously and note that, I think it's important to think about what we're providing as well.
I think for four more times, we could suck it up, is what I think.
Well, I'm hoping that the neighborhood can, but...
Right.
I think we probably have to have a little bit more education on, maybe next year.
Yeah.
On what we're doing.
And that's what we're looking to do. You know, after this year's over, we're going to sit down and look at things. What worked, what didn't work?
Right.
What can we change? How can we, you know, work with the community down there? I mean, we're, we want to continue, have this continue to grow and work with the community so it grows. So we'll definitely be doing things like that.
Okay, thank you. And we'll take all the concerns under advisement, and we'll, I guess, another policy we need to craft possibly, so, in the future. We have nothing from police. This is, Evening Engineering, Mr. Kubis. This is just a report. It was changed to a report?
Correct, it was. There are some slides up here, too. So, apologize, the blue probably didn't show up as well as it could. I'm going to see if I can steal their pointer.
Got to be careful with that pointer. I think I got a reflection before.
So the property, just to put it in reference, is right to the southwest of this neighborhood is the Hampton Inn on 14th Street. Maybe better, Clayton over here. But, so we have a couple of properties. There's one home, and this is, this is off of our GIS database that we use called Pictometry, or that I use. We have a couple of different things. But, so this parcel is shown like that. It's the end of my slideshow. We'll go backwards. The parcel to the north is a larger parcel, and it takes up the entire width of the block. And according to our database, again, I can't seem to... This little parcel in the middle was a city-owned parcel, 30 feet wide, with no utilities in it, and it was brought to our attention. A neighbor would like to purchase this from the city. All things looked clear. We really had no identified use for this parcel. We talked to both the neighbors, said, "Hey, you know, this looks like a good parcel for the city to divest itself from." But because there's two properties abutting it, we would like to put it up for sale. We have to put it up for sale, for bids. And as we looked into it a little bit closer, though, a lot of these property descriptions are a little bit deceiving, where it's a lot, and a portion of a lot, and a lot, and a portion of a lot. And what it looks like right now is that not only is this 30-foot parcel on the north side, but also the 30 feet below it are owned by the city. And our database doesn't reflect that right now. So it changes the value potentially of that parcel. And one, I want to go back and make sure exactly that the clear title to this entire 60-foot parcel. It still may be that we'll come forward to you at the next meeting with a recommendation to put this up for sale. But a minimum bid might change because before, if it was 30 feet, it was really unusable to, you know, a third party that wasn't adjacent to it. Now, if we have 60 feet there, which it looks like we do, it becomes a fairly usable piece of property to others, potentially. So just wanted to report on, I had this put together and thought I was going to give you a recommendation to offer it up for sale and advertise it to be bid on. I don't feel comfortable doing that right now, so we'll do a little more investigating and bring it back to you on the 10th.
Is that, Craig, is that the spot where the street just stops there?
The street just stops, yeah, and it...
So is that right-of-way, then?
It's not right-of-way. There was two subdivisions that were split right along this line. Everything to the west was the Houston subdivision, and then these two rows of lots along 4th Avenue East was the Yon subdivision. And I don't know if there, you know, it was the boom time, early 80s, if it was two plats happening right, you know, almost at the same time, and one subdivision platted that street, and the next one just missed it? Or, you know, I can't say what happened there. It doesn't seem very logical that the city would have chose to not plat right-of-way there. But I think the city did go through some effort when they, the city ended up with a lot of this property back, you know, after the 80s and into the 90s. And I think went through some effort, it appears, to sell off these kind of odd parcels to make this right-of-way line up now. So right now, there's two parcels that are exactly parallel with the right-of-way lines of what, 15th Street, where it ends.
So we wouldn't, you don't think we'd ever just pave it and make the street go through, or?
Well, it could be. I think you'll see some presentations tomorrow at our special meeting from an individual that says, "Why build that street? Why not have it be a city property?" So anyway, we need to do a little more research, make sure we have clear title here, to what exactly we have clear title. And then I think, one way or another, we'll bring forward as a recommendation to sell or not sell, maybe it's to build a street, but we'll bring it back on the 10th. Any other questions?
Any questions?
Nope.
Thank you.
Thanks.
We have a PACE Analytical contract. Mr. Balisteros?
Good evening, President Decker and members of the commission. I have in front of you a consideration to approve a contract for PACE Analytical. The, this agreement is for the testing, shipping, and reporting services of water samples collected by the Water Utilities Department and tested by the Environmental Protection Agency-approved laboratory PACE Analytical services. We do this in order to maintain compliance with the EPA's fourth regulated contaminant monitoring rule. The last rule was UCMR 3, and it occurred, I believe, five years ago. This is an unbudgeted item that is necessary in order to comply with the 1996 amendments to the Safe Water Drinking Act. This proposal is for the testing, shipping, and reporting of samples for 10 cyanotoxins, two metals, eight pesticides, one pesticide manufacturing byproduct, three bromated halucetic acid groups, three alcohols, and three semi-volatile chemical compounds, as well as indicators for total organic carbon TOC and bromide. The Water Utilities Department will be performing the sample collection, mailing to PACE Analytical laboratories in Florida, for testing and reporting into the EPA Central Data Exchange, also known as the CDX. As shown on the attached proposal, PACE Analytical will perform analysis on all samples for the 12-month monitoring period, and we're estimating the total project cost to be $6,900 to $7,500. And it's going to depend on the results of a couple of tests. If it's between that amount, there might be additional testing. That's what would raise it to $7,500 from the current amount of $6,900. The Water Department plans to use our water distribution fund cash reserve for this project, and thank you for consideration, and staff recommends approval.
Any questions for Mr. Balisteros? Now I look for a motion.
Move to approve contract with PACE Analytical?
No motion to approve, with a second. Any further questions, comments? Now we'll vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Contract is approved.
Thank you again for your time.
And we have Mr. Prowse in place of Mr. Zeroff tonight. We have a conveyor purchase.
Good evening, Mr. President and commissioners. I am here to talk to you about a purchase of a conveyor that'll be used to handle our materials, our recyclable materials. A few meetings back, I had you approve a compactor unit to process our recyclables and get them prepped to ship to our merf out in Minneapolis. After reviewing with the, with the design team, our equipment was not compatible to what they were proposing. So the recommendation was to feed it with a conveyor system. It would be a lot safer method compared to what they were talking initially. Fisher Industries is based around conveyor design and functions. They actually supplied the conveyor for the solid waste baler. So I reached out to them, got a quote from them for $38,075. Tonight, we're looking at the approval of that quote from them, so we can continue on with our project that is still tentatively slated to start October 1st. Along with that, I also have in front of you some structural changes that'll be, that were budgeted through the capital improvements. And Two's Construction will do the building restructuring to accommodate the compactor unit, which came in at $11,000. And Burger Electric, whom did all the electrical for the baler building when it was originally designed, came in at just about $13,000. On the structural changes, we had $20,000 budgeted, but by adding the conveyor, obviously, the electrical costs increased slightly. So with that being said, this should be the final meeting where I have to talk about capital improvements with the recycling project. And as it sits right now, from what was budgeted when we initially started, we should still be $47,600 in the clear. So I'm looking for approval of the conveyor project and finalize this, hopefully.
And we have very limited information on exactly what's happening with the building.
So with the building, we're going to accommodate the stationary compactor inside, and the two trailers would be placed on the outside. The location would be in the southeast corner of our building. There's an open wall. When it was originally built, we could add on to that direction. After working with Two's, we're able to take out a section between the beams and accommodate to push that compactor unit in, and then set the trailers right next to it. So it's basically taking down part of a wall, 12-by-14-foot opening, and then re-skirting it back up with a, it's currently a 15-inch wall, concrete on the bottom five feet, and then it's steel the rest of the way up. But it would be taking that out and then skirting it back in with about a four-inch studded wall.
To the facade, the appearance towards the highway, is there something you have to change there? Is there anything you have to add, or?
It actually doesn't face the interstate a whole lot. It's facing more towards the south.
Okay.
Towards the public works direction. We also do have all the evergreens that are coming up really nicely around our property, so it's protecting it.
Okay.
And it's the only way that we can actually accommodate the compactor unit.
Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Prowse on the conveyor and the building restructure? Now I look for a motion.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All right, we have a motion to approve the purchase of the conveyor and the building restructure and electrical, with a second. Any further discussion or questions? Now we'll vote. Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Thank you, Mr. Prowse.
Thank you. Next up, I have a report from Demcom Industries. Currently, I have a couple staff members that are planning to go down and visit Demcom Industries. They're the merf that we're planning to take our recyclables to. They will leave on the 24th, meet with the individual or representative from Demcom on the 25th, and then return back on the 26th. We're opening an invitation up to any of the commissioners or anyone that would be willing to participate in that tour. If you are interested, please let Rachel or myself know, and we will get you on the schedule. That's all I have on that. And the third thing is a recycling partnership grant. I have a draft version in front of me. The Cine Dickinson did get honored, or did receive, the recycling partnership grant in regards to the purchase of garbage container, or recycling containers for our recycling project. Tentatively, it's slated for about $56,000. It's based on the number of recyclable containers that we put out to our residents, up to 7,350 containers. So it's $7 per container for the RFID technology, and then another dollar per container for the information, informational packet. So a total of $8 per container that we actually set out on our street.
So that'll allow the recycling trucks to monitor exactly, I mean, with the cameras and everything?
The RFID technology will work with our AVL GPS system as well, and it'll give us a timestamp of when that container was dumped. It'll also be a tracking management tool, asset management tool for us.
All right, great. Anything else, Mr. Prowse? Anything else, Mr. Prowse?
That's all I have tonight.
Any, before Mr. Prowse leaves, any questions for Mr. Prowse, Commissioner?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we're moving on to planning. We have a development agreement for Prairie Creek. Mrs. Murtha?
President Decker, members of the Commission, the Prairie Creek Development Agreement is before you. Just to clarify one point, under it says, underneath that, it says, "Consideration to approve a resolution." I did speak with Reed about that. It actually was a holdover from the last meeting's agenda. There is no resolution to approve, just a development agreement on a motion. I'll, I'll highlight this agreement for you by saying that I've confirmed with Mr. Kubis and Mr. Hadley, that the only remaining item to be completed under this agreement is actually the lighting, and you'll notice that there is a surety that would go into place if that lighting is not completed by July 30th. So, however, everything else is done. And so, we're looking for your approval of that agreement this evening.
So, where's the fence at? Why is this something we require? Why would we require them a privacy fence? Was there a reason?
Commissioner, it was on the, toward the crossings, toward State, the area behind those homes that they're being, there's one home that's built and completed now. It's behind those only.
Oh, okay.
It's separating the uses, separating the commercial from the residential. They went, they, they had a zoning designation of higher density that was allowed there, and then they chose to go with single-family, and the developer actually is on board with that. He was going to build a, a fence, anyway, so.
All right. That's scary as well. Thanks.
Any other questions for Mr. Hadley or Mrs. Murtha? Now, I look for a motion on this development agreement.
I'd move we approve the development agreement for Prairie Creek.
We have a motion to approve?
Second.
With a second. Any further discussion or questions? Now, we'll vote. Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Trustum?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Development agreement is approved. We have nothing from building and codes. Timetable agenda's been taken care of. And we'll move on to public issues of city concern, not on the agenda. If anyone from the public would like to come forward and has a concern with the city or anything within the city, that is not on the agenda, please come forward. No one from the public? All right. We'll close the public issues or city concern, not on the agenda. Next item up is our Commission. If there's anything from Commissioners, and I see that Mrs. Murtha is listed on here, do you have anything during this?
Well, actually, that, that as well was a, a holdover. However, fortuitously, I do have two updates for you.
Okay.
For me, one of them is with regards to the Odyssey. I know at the last, at the last meeting, I indicated that the plat would be on this Commission agenda. It is not, all for good reasons, but the, for the Commission's background, due to the finalization of the, the building scope, we needed to adjust some of the lines, and that, and because this, the part of the area is impacting area of use by the US Post Office, the US Post Office was, reached out to, and they are going to be a signatory on the plat, and that, the final form of the plat is now currently under review by the Post Office, just to make sure everybody's in agreement as to, and is happy with the result of the replat. So, it is there. The hope is that it will be on the next Commission agenda, but I don't want to speak for that federal agency, but that is the current status.
Okay. Thank you.
And then the only other, very minor item was, I was actually gonna jump in on the special meeting and budget meeting dates earlier, but they got broken up, so I'll just, I just wanted to highlight for the Commission that I will, I will not be at the, attending the special meeting on 6/25, but I will be there on 6/26, and the reason is, I will be in Savannah, Georgia, speaking on a panel about fiduciary obligations for institutional investors. And I just, in this time of budgetary review, I just wanna let you know that the city is not paying for me to go. I, I am, I am going, and I'm also not using work time to attend. It is, it is a topic of interest to me, which is why I was excited to participate and be on the panel.
Well, congratulations on the selection to the panel.
Thank you.
And it, it is a nice little way to, to present to people in other parts of the world, I think, what we're dealing with in North Dakota, and, and see how we're dealing with it. Moving on to Commission, if anything for Commissioners, I would like to go first, and I would like to thank Mr. Altman, Clayton Altman, for all his years of service.
Thank you.
By the election, we will have a new Commissioner, and you have done an outstanding job. All your time is appreciated. I know how much time goes into this job.
Thank you. I appreciate that. It's been a great eight years.
Yes. It's, it's been an honor serving with you.
Thank you. Ditto.
I would like to echo those sentiments and say that, you know, we're losing a very, very passionate, articulate, driven Commissioner, who sometimes is the leader in navigating some very difficult conversations, so you will be greatly missed, and I wanna thank you for your service to this community, and for also being, you know, someone for me to look up to as well.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
And just for me, I'm definitely gonna miss your eight years of experience, and, you know, I always respected all your comments on stuff that we've done in the past, and going forward, it's gonna be greatly missed. I wish you the best, and don't be surprised if I call once in a while and ask some questions.
Sounds good.
Anyone else? Any comments?
Yeah. We have, we have, Carson. It's been fun serving with Carson. All right.
Anyone else? Anything else for the good of the cause?
President Decker, I just wanted to mention, to remind you all that tomorrow morning, we have the P&amp;Z, the Planning and Zoning Committee, plus a joint Commission meeting that starts at 7:30 tomorrow morning here at City Hall. Just wanted to remind you.
P&amp;Z still starts at 7, though, right?
Yeah, we still have Planning and Zoning at 7, so.
Okay.
All right. Nothing else from Commission? I would look for a motion to adjourn.
Mr. P-
We have a motion to adjourn.
I was gonna say. I figured Mr.-
We have a second.
Second.
We are adjourned.